Planning Board is now in session. We open tonight's Planning Board meeting by acknowledging and honoring the life of John Bartolini. John died last Friday, the age of 99, lifelong Southborough resident. To the Planning Board, Mr. Bartolini was a frequent visitor with many, many projects over many decades. He appeared before the Planning Board at the very beginning of zoning and the requirements to do so. He built many residential neighborhoods throughout the town and commercial developments. He'll be missed. In addition, as a personal note, he was my next-door neighbor for over 40 years. And like I said, he'll be missed. He appeared here with his sons and his grandsons. And I hope he's in a better place. So we'll move on to the first item on the agenda, which is a discussion of the master plan update. Mrs. Luttrell.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. The next meeting of the Master Plan Committee is next Wednesday, January 15th, in which we expect to have Senator Eldridge and Representative Dykema to be in attendance to discuss the impact of regional and state transportation issues and opportunities on Southborough. So that is in our normal place at the Senior Center at 7:30 on January 15th. We'll also be having a more in-depth discussion on schools, housing, and commercial development. And the meeting following that is February 12th, also at the Senior Center. All are welcome and encouraged to attend. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? In addition to our usual complimenting of Mrs. Luttrell's hard work in this very long process. Thank you, Mimi. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for 25 Marlborough Road, St. Mark's Dormitory. Major site plan approval is continued from September 9th, September 23rd, October 21st, November 18th, July, December 16th. And another public hearing for 25 Marlborough Road, St. Mark's Dormitory, lower-impact development, continued from those same dates. Ms... Are you one next?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, just to inform everyone, I did read, or I completed the Mullins Form for the last meeting. I did listen to the tape. Thank you for acknowledging that I wasn't there and calling me out for if I would be opposed to the parking space. Sizes, I'm okay with it. But I did, I always like hearing my name on tape, so thank you. But I have filled out the Mullins Form, I'll give it to the town clerk so that I can vote going forward.
So will ask the Town Planner to give us an update on what's happened since our last meeting on December 16th. Karina.
Since the December 16th meeting, we prepared draft decisions, which we reviewed the conditions at the last meeting relatively thoroughly. An extension request was granted to continue the public hearings to this evening with Planning Board action by January 10th. The draft decisions were sent to Town Council, who reviewed them and provided some minor corrections, revisions, and some input. We also received some feedback from the applicant's team with some minor comments on some of the items that I had highlighted. And the copies which you have in your hand this evening dated January 3rd, 2020, the current and hopefully final draft for the decision of major site plan approval and the decision of special permit approval for lower-impact development. We also received some information from Open Space Preservation Commission Chair Freddie Gillespie, and she'll be talking to that on her own behalf a little bit later. Which brings us to this evening. At the last meeting also, I just want to point out that we reviewed the waivers that are requested and got a general sense from the planning board members. So hopefully this evening, everything is ironed out. Couple of things, I had done a follow-up email to the applicant team with some highlighted items that I thought were items to be addressed tonight and in the plans that were recently submitted. So they did submit a revised set of plans, which included, I think, everything we asked for except the one condition on the landscaping should be. The conditions that are listed in the decision for landscaping, I had asked that those get put on the plan as well, on the planting plan, so that there's no confusion. So if the board does close the hearings tonight and vote, the final plans can still be delivered and then endorsed after the appeal period. And that's where we are.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Who's up? Welcome back.
Thank you. We're happy to be back. Rob Cook-Levitz could not be here this evening. His wife gave birth to a baby boy last week, so he's otherwise engaged this evening. I'm Lee Sollenberger, I'm a consultant OPM for St. Mark's School. We also have Sandra Duran here, who's the Director of Facilities, Brian Malisi, who's our Civil Engineer, and Andrew Leonard, who is our Landscape Architect. So we are prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
So we, you have received the draft decision documents. Is that correct?
Yes.
And you've gone over them?
We did.
We've had, in our usual procedure, we've had the board review the draft along with Town Council. And so what we would like to do is go over, more by exception, the conditions and the documents. And as stated, Town Planner feels that the set of plans, the latest set of plans is almost complete. Usually, we don't vote unless we have the completed plans in front of us, but each one is judged on the law and merit. And based on the item, or items that are missing, and the fact that there's no disagreement, then what the board has done in the past is allowed ourselves to vote on the project with the understanding that the final set of plans would be submitted during the 20-day appeal period, after which, if the plans are in order and everything else is in order, the board would then sign off on the project. That's assuming that the vote carries tonight, or if there's even a motion made tonight. But I think that we're at that point. So we've got the decision of major site plan approval. You have that in front of you?
Yes.
So Karina, do you want to take us through that, the areas that you highlighted? And then let's just talk about those. And then if there's any questions or comments on any other parts of it from both sides, then we'll go into that too. But we're pretty deep into this right now. Karina.
Okay, and I put them on the screen so everyone in the audience can also follow along. So the text that's highlighted represents changes that Town Council asked, revisions that I made because they were just standard administrative things that had to be updated, and then feedback from the applicant's team. And as you see, it's January 3rd, 2020. In paragraph two, we updated the square footage of the dormitory building and the renovation of the southeastern entrance of the main building with the elevator. Then if you go down to item seven, we always put in the updated approved plan date, which when you submit the plans, all the plan sheets should reflect in the revision date that date. Sometimes the existing conditions, plans of the survey, it's not as critical because we understand that's, you know, prior. But the revisions to the other plans should all show that in the revision. So if we ever pull out a sheet independently, it has that right date on it.
We'll correct that.
Okay. If you go down to number nine, which is correspondence, we added an email from Open Space Preservation Commission Chair Freddie Gillespie, dated December 31st, 2019. We may also enter a letter that she received this evening. We may add that to the list before I send this to the, for John to sign. The yellow highlighted is Andy Mills, his Mullins Rule letter to the town clerk. And the update, the next bullet is the Town Council's review letter date. All kind of administrative things. If we go to the findings, you'll see, number one, the same square footage of the proposed project pieces updated. And also, I added, the project also includes a new entry parking area to reflect what I had read in some of the documentation you sent me. Under number four, this was Town Council's suggested revision to add and protections under Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 3, regarding invoking the Dover Amendment. If you continue all the way to decision and the vote, which is on page four of seven, the yellow highlighted is where I have to update how the Planning Board votes. Again, the date is highlighted here for the plans that will be the approved plan date. And if you continue through the conditions of approval to number five, landscaping, as discussed at the last Planning Board meeting about the neonicotinoid chemicals, a paragraph was formulated between the landscape architect, Andrew, and Open Space Preservation. And so we added that language into this condition for landscaping. If you continue down to number seven, this was a fire chief comment. I just added a clarification there. Per the fire chief, the entire road shall be posted no parking, fire lane, due to the fact that the driveway is only 12 feet wide, where it's considered typically a walkway. And I just clarified, based on applicant's feedback, that it's 20-foot wide, including four-foot wide paver walks on each side, so there's no confusion. Number 10, prior to construction, since I had, since we had a lot of conditions in both of the permits, I just kept all the conditions the same in both, so there was no confusion in the future. So there's a little redundancy. So you'll see here, this is the special permit for lower-impact decision, and plans shall be recorded with proof of recording. It mimics number nine, that says, prior to the start of construction, the major site plan approval decision shall be recorded. So the lid plans have to be recorded, and since they're the same, that's that. And then the last thing is, I usually have to keep, you know, what happens with the votes gets updated, so that's highlighted. And Planning Board member Jesse Stein has recused himself, as you're aware. So I have him as abstaining. And that is basically the only changes that remain. And the special permit for lower impact reflects the same. Let me just show you quickly here. If we open that, you'll see, as I skim through it quickly here, the same types of changes. Very similar. The findings. In the lower-impact development on item number five, this paragraph here under findings was requested by Town Council to clarify the criteria and findings from a special permit, which falls under the zoning bylaw 174-9. So again, it's kind of legal speak. As you go through, you'll see the same updates of the square footage. Number seven, invoking the Dover Amendment protections under Mass General Law. These waiver requests pertain to the lower-impact development special permit. And then in the decision and vote of the board, Town Council kindly pointed out that I had major site plan verbiage in here instead of lid verbiage. So I corrected that, same date for the plans. And he also asked me to add at the end of this section before the conditions that the plans are in accordance with and pursuant to 174-9 of the zoning bylaw in Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 9. Just to specifically point out, it's a special permit. Then the conditions, we repeat again, under the landscaping, item number five, the reference to neonicotinoid chemicals that was worked out. The fire chief's comment clarified by the applicant that it does have 20-foot wide along the walkways. Again, the decision, just tweaking the language there so it's correct. And then the vote of the board members. So that's it. That's it, Don.
Okay, so before we move on to the waiver requests, I'll ask if there's any questions or comments on what we just went over. Mrs. Luttrell.
At the last meeting, one of the follow-ups was a confirmation of the turning radius. Did we receive that?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
And on the plans that were actually submitted, were some of the turning radiuses on sheet L 3.00.
Okay.
And following that, I had questions regarding a complete, complete evidence all the way through the driveway entrance and around those corners, and also from the main entrance side. And Whitman and Bingham provided me with sketches of that same sheet showing the truck turning radius all the way through. And I can show you those on the board, they're in the Dropbox.
All right. No, that's good. And then I have just one persnickety thing. Under condition number five, and I think it's the 10th bullet on the mulch, except dye, it should be D Y E dye, not D I E dye. Sorry, I'm a little OCD.
Where is that?
Well, actually, go ahead.
Oh, oh, except D Y E dye, D Y E dye, okay, I'm sorry, yep. Got it.
So that's on the lid, too?
Yep.
Actually, I was impressed when you asked about the turning radius. And the Town Planner was able to tell you the sheet number, which is?
L 3.00. If I'm not mistaken.
Gives you an idea of how thorough our Town Planner is. Board members, so any more questions or comments on what we just went over relative to the conditions for the site plan? So if there aren't any, then we'll move on to the waiver requests. And there are three listed. So the first one has to do with the loading areas must be shown on the plans. So we'll entertain a motion relative to that. If it gets seconded, then we'll have any discussion from the board or the public, and then we'll vote. Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the waiver request from zoning 74, 174-10.b, 2b3, loading errors must be shown on the plans as requested by the applicant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion, questions, comments? All in favor? Four to zero. Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the waiver request from zoning 174-12.c2. Each parking space shall be at least nine and a half feet by 18, to the request of the applicant to be nine feet in width.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments on that?
Was that Marnie? Mimi. Thank you.
Your second set of ears down there. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Four to zero. Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the waiver request from zoning 174-12.d, the proposed building. uh, the proposed building, uh, with a floor area between fifteen, uh, fifteen thousand and one square feet to fifty thousand square feet, um, loading space shall be provided, and so forth.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion, questions, comments? All in favor? Four to zero. So, that takes care of the waivers, uh, requested waivers. Um, so, if there's no other questions or comments, the next step would be to close the public hearing, after which, no information, uh, can be, uh, heard.
Want to close them both at the same time? Do you want to do the waiver and special permits?
Oh, I think I want to, we want to do one. One is for, um, one is for site plan approval, the other one is for a special permit. So, we'll completely separate them like we, like we have. Freddie?
Hi, Freddie Gr- uh, what's my name? Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. And, um, I can't find it here. I sent an email earlier where we described the collaboration that the team from Saint Mark's and particularly their landscape architect, Andrew, and I went through to get the language for the no-neonicotinoid use on the plant material. This is cutting edge, and you may be, likely are the first Planning Board to have, um, actually had this as a condition. And, um, thank you very much, and you should be very proud of yourselves for the leadership you've shown. Um, it won't be unrecognized, I guarantee you. It's already is being recognized. Um, I also wanted to thank the Saint Mark's team. And this just came in tonight, and I'm not going to read the whole letter. It's kind of long and very nice, but, um, I want to read a couple of highlights. Um, this is from Robert Kuklewicz, if I haven't murdered his name again. Um, anyhow, um, dear Freddie, I want to thank you and the entire Open Space Preservation Commission for working within our entire team at Saint Mark's School on the landscaping plan for our upcoming residential dormitory project. Um, I'll skip down to the end. We truly appreciate you and the Open Space Commission working with us. Our many meetings together showed we are able to accomplish this while gaining an understanding of the many benefits of the local native plantings, while simultaneously attending to the overall aesthetics. In addition, we are looking forward to working with you on future landscape enhancements and other opportunities such as bringing specialists to the campus for habitat surveys, recommendations for pollinators, and even the potential to partner with you on a biology curriculum for our students. Again, we truly enjoyed working with you and the Open Space Preservation Commission on this project, and look forward to many more years of successful collaboration together. And I want to thank the Saint Mark's team, and I felt it's worthwhile for the Planning Board to know how these sorts of projects can become great for the community, for the project proponent, and looking forward to many more successful, um, such applications. But this is a real testament to the leadership you have shown and the results that the entire community will benefit from for generations. So, thank you. Thank you, Saint Mark's.
So, um, you're thanking the Planning Board, but if not for your leadership in this, um, then we, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have gone, gone this far. We wouldn't have known about this stuff. So, it's really on you, Freddie.
Well, and I appreciate that, but together, we can do what singly we can't. So, yay to all of us.
Any more questions, comments on the site plan for, uh, the s- the dormitory project? Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for, uh, major site plan, um, for Saint Mark's School Dormitory Residential Building Life at, uh, twenty-five Marlborough Road.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we approve the request for a major site plan approval, uh, for twenty-five Marlborough Road, Saint Mark's School Dorm Residential Life Building, um, with conditions, uh, per, um, what has been presented on, dated January third, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero. Site plan's approved. Congratulations. And now, we move on to the special permit for the lower impact development. That site plan required a m- a majority. This, um, special permit requires a sp- a supermajority, which is four votes, four of the five, uh, members. So, um, we went over the, uh, document. Did you want to go over it, Karina?
No, I did, real quickly. It was basically the same.
And then, uh, we have to do, if there's no questions or comments on that, then we'll move on to the waiver requests. And there are five of those. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make, make a motion that we grant the waiver request, uh, from zoning one seven four dash thirteen dot three dot J two. Planning Board may require a ca- cash performance guarantee to ensure compliance with the requirements, um, yada, yada, yada. Uh, basically, this is, um, in line with other, um, projects through the school. We fully anticipate this is going to be completed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Four to zero. Very good. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we, uh, grant the waiver request from Section three dot eleven, uh, of the Rules and Regulations for Lid, uh, Special Permits, Water Balance calculation on a yearly hydraulic budget, um, of water balance calculations.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Four to zero. Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Make a motion that we grant the waiver request, uh, for Section three dot one two, for the Rules and Regulations, uh, Lid, Special Permit Hydraulic Assessment for Pre and Post Development, uh, consideration, including seasonal profile.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion, questions, comments? All in favor? Four to zero. Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant the waiver request, uh, from Section three dot one five dot one O, of the Rules and Regulations of Lid, Special Permits, uh, Recharge Analysis that calculates pre and post-project annual water ground recharge rates.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Four to zero. Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant the waiver request, uh, for zoning one seven four dash thirteen dot three dot E J, lid techniques used, uh, in the roof gardens where, uh, practical, uh, and the use of permeable paving.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Four to zero. All of the waiver requests have been granted. We would then move on to any questions or comments, um, before we close the public hearing? Anything at all? Seeing none, Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, make a motion, we close the public hearing for special permit, uh, approval, lower impact development, twenty-five Marlborough Road, Saint Mark's School, uh, Dorm Residential Life Building.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the, uh, vote to grant the special permit. I'm sorry, to close the public hearing. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the special permit, uh, for lower impact development, twenty-five Marlborough Road, Saint Mark's School, uh, Dorm Residential Life with conditions as dated on January third, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Four to zero. That would, um, grant the special permit. Um, so, that's it. Thank you, um, and best of, best of luck. We look forward to getting those documents in the twenty-day appeal period, which starts, uh, after the town, after I sign the, um, the, the documents, the f- the decision documents, and the town planner brings them and has them logged in with the town clerk. That starts the twenty-day appeal period. And we'll let you know, we'll let you know when that happens. Anything else?
We will get those in. And on behalf of Saint Mark's School, I'd like to thank the board for working with us. Like to thank Freddie Gillespie, uh, and especially thank Karina Quinn for working with us the whole way through and helping us get it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mills?
Motion for a two-minute recess.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? We're, we're adjourned. Two minutes. Okay, the Planning Board's back in session after a two-minute recess. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item, lighting bylaw, final draft review. We'll ask the town planner to give us the update, and, um, ask Professor Heilmann to come forward.
I'm going to defer this update to my assistant, Sarah Hecker, who's been managing this project.
The light is on you.
Fantastic. Um, so, yeah, we've been, you know, Dustin and I have been working, uh, together to re-craft and redraft, uh, the bylaw into the document that's going to serve as that functional, um, what do you call it, regulation document, um, and then the subsequent, uh, bylaw. Um, so, right now, you know, we're just trying to make sure that everything's in the right place, that we've taken into consideration, uh, things like where the two, uh, lighting zones meet. Uh, that's one thing that had been brought up at previous meetings, to make sure where we have, uh, area of very low light and a, a high light, that those, that there's no light trespass. Um, I think at this point, you know, the language is very clear that the light trespass is not allowed. Um, but, you know, scatter, light scatter from those locations is something, um, that, that may still occur. And we're going to try to see how we can minimize that. So, scatter would be if there's a large wall painted white, and there's a illumination pointing at that wall, that it will bounce back and kind of shine on to the other properties adjacent to that particular, um, property. So, it wouldn't be light trespass, per se, but it would still be kind of illuminating the space that would be next to it. Um, I think those are kind of the highlights. Uh, Dustin and I are going to be meeting on Thursday. We did receive, um, some feedback from John Parent, um, on the lighting bylaw. He is the Director of Facilities for the town. Um, it's kind of a lengthy email, um, and it, it includes, I think, you know, at kind of some high points that, um, he's concerned about, uh, safety in terms of, you know, lowering the lighting levels. However, it's very clear in the bylaw that we are trying to make sure that, obviously, safety and, um, you know, commerce are something that we're preserving, even in reducing that lighting element. Um, he also suggested that all of the town properties be exempt from this particular bylaw, which I wouldn't necessarily agree with. I think that it's important for the town to lead by example, um, and really make sure that they're upholding what, um, what they're making other people do. Um, so, those are, you know, some of the kind of- So, those are, you know, some of the kind of highlights from that email, and we're going to address those concerns in our next revision. The final, mostly finalized draft, as much as possible, will go to town council at the end of the week. That's about it.
Okay. Professor, did you want to speak?
Also, the public hearing for this lighting bylaw and as the site plan bylaw is going to be held on the 27th. So, we're putting in that ad, January 27th.
Welcome back. Hi, thanks for having me back. I hope everybody had a good holiday. So, Dustin Heilmann, Seven Harris Drive. So, I think, yeah, we've made some good progress on striking a great balance for the town, for the board, on taking what is a somewhat technical update to the lighting bylaw and breaking it out into a bylaw and to a rules and regs doc. And I think the final touches are going to come in us making sure we have the right balance between the two. And like Sarah had said, we're working great together. I think I'd just take a quick opportunity to give some thoughts on the feedback that we've gotten from John Parent. I think at the, at the end, there, he had commented that we might consult the International Dark Sky Association, NIES, model ordinance as a starting place, and I think it's important to point out that this bylaw and rules and regs doc is adapted exactly from that document. In fact, in large parts of it, it's word for word from that. So, I'm a bit confused by that, but I'm glad to see that he and the building inspector support that site and initiative and the language that's in that, because pretty much all the recommendations that we make in the document are coming directly out of that. I think it's important to point out as a comment, to feedback, that one of the major reasons why we've established a cutoff of less than or equal to 3,000 Kelvin for the correlated color temperature of these lights is because of all of the new data that's been out for the last few years. American Medical Association recommendations on harmful effects in humans, large wildlife impacts and all this kind of stuff. And so, that's why we're setting this. I think it's also important, because they had recommended that we not go with that cutoff, that we go with the 4,000 Kelvin cutoff, which is much, much bluer. So, that's one point that I wanted to reiterate, but also, the 3,000 Kelvin cutoff is actually not as yellow as it's thought to be. 3,000 Kelvin is actually still quite white. It still has quite a bit of blue in it. And so, that's a conservative cutoff for this lighting. The IDA, which they reference, actually recommends down to 2,200 Kelvin. So, something in a range of 2,200 to 2,700 is actually what they recommend in the IES and IDA language. I'd be happy to go with that. So, 3,000 Kelvin is what we thought was a conservative cutoff for that, which gives a lot of flexibility with lighting. 3,000 Kelvin is actually a whiter light. So, comments that they had about landscape, possible effects on landscape lighting not being effective, or auto dealers not being able to show off their cars at night, I guess. I'm not sure who buys cars at night, but usually buy mine in the day. I just wasn't too sure about. Let's see if there's anything else I wanted to say. Yeah, just, I guess, about the recommendation that the municipal building and other public buildings be exempt from this, I think is perfect, right? I totally agree that towns should be leading by example for this. But also, the IDA site has in their top five myths about lighting, that brighter white, brighter lighter bluer light is safer. It's a complete myth. There's no studies that support that at all. In fact, there are studies that support that if you have bluer light and brighter light, it introduces so much more glare that crime actually can go up. So, it's exactly the opposite. So, I wouldn't support that. I guess the last thing I wanted to respond to was that they, I actually learned from this document that we rent our streetlights, which I actually had a sad face to. I think it's unfortunate on multiple levels that we're renting our streetlights. I have a lot of familiarity with towns that have rented streetlights from National Grid and the process in turning over the streetlights to LEDs. National Grid tends to default to a 4,000 Kelvin light, and there have been, to say a lot is a master of understatement, a lot of interesting stories to play out with National Grid doing this. There's been a lot of pushback in lights going out at 4,000 Kelvin, retrofitting of them back to 3,000 Kelvin, once the towns saw what they looked like. So, I think, I'm going to recommend that we engage with National Grid, if that's the case. Let's engage with them, have conversations about what they have. Speculation has been that they simply have a lot of surplus of 4,000 K lights that they want to use. They can do 3,000 K. They have. There's precedent for that, but we have to ask. And I think if we have a bylaw or very strong standards, it'll only make that case easier. It's my personal recommendation, professional recommendation, that having, turning South Row over to 4,000 K streetlights would be a disaster, absolute disaster. 4,000 K is incredibly bright, incredibly blue. This whole town would be a parking lot, all the streets. So, I recommend that we encapsulate that within the bylaw. I realize that it's under different jurisdiction, but setting a strong standard, I think, is going to be critically important for that. But I'm happy to take any questions that you might have, too. Karina?
Yeah, thanks, Dustin. I just want to add a couple of things. First of all, thank you and Marnie and Sarah for working on this working group, to pull this together and the approach that you're taking. And I wanted to say as an aside, that I think that, you know, it's a very, it's not very known to the average person, this new type of lighting approach. Although I want to point out, it's, South Row, it won't be like the first place it's done.
No, far from it.
There were other places, and I think that as we go forward into the public hearing phase, that if we, as the people know more and more about it, they will get a better comfort level with it. Because it is a change, and it is different, but that doesn't mean it's not better.
Sure, absolutely.
So, I think there's just that, always that change, the fear that comes with change. So, I think that the more we can do to educate as many people as we can on how productive and beneficial it will be through your knowledge and the knowledge you pass on to us and with the training that you'll provide us at some point, it will be really helpful.
Yeah.
So, I think that will help bridge some of that fear.
Yeah, I completely agree.
I had a question. This is similar in technology, new technology, you know, several years ago, not that many years ago, we did the solar bylaw for the town of South Row. And although solar panels are pretty common now, and they've been around for quite a while, the technology and the regulations had to be written to align, be aligned with the industry. So, when we were doing that bylaw for solar panels, we engaged with industry solar manufacturers and got their input as to the different components and phases of a solar panel, from its construction, its assembly, its operation, and its eventual end-of-life disposal. So, I know you've, you referenced the dark skies people, but and National Grid, are there any, like, non-utility, or is there anybody out there in the industry that has either reached out to you guys or that you could reach out to, to make sure that what you're proposing is welcomed, if not rejected or opposed by the industry?
Yeah, yeah. And I think, from what I've seen so far, you know, you can find examples of both. You can find examples where it's sort of been resisted, where it's been embraced. It's region-specific. I think one of the things that's come about relatively recently, but now it's pretty much everywhere. In fact, I think a few months ago, I put together a list, and I can share that with you, of eight or 10 different sites of major suppliers of these kinds of lights for towns, municipalities, all different kinds of lighting. One thing that's making industries, businesses, a little bit more accommodating of this is the availability of these lights now. Most of the companies out there that you would go to shop around for things like streetlights or building lights and parking lot lights, have a dedicated area of their website for responsible lighting, or for green lighting, or for environmentally friendly lighting. So, they're readily available, and the nice thing is they don't cost anything more, because it's the same tech. They just tune it to be, to tune out the blue, and then they can tune the brightness. A lot of the luminaires that they actually have, they can tune them on-site as well. So, I don't know what kind they might be thinking about for street lighting in town, but a lot of the towns that have gone with these luminaires, where they can just go up on the pole and tune it, tune the color and tune the brightness to fix it, would be a much better way to go. But I hear you. I think it's something to look into.
And then, do you think, either Sarah or you, Professor, do you feel that the language, the way that the bylaw is structured, that if, when it's presented at the town meeting, somebody stands up and says, "I'd like to make an amendment, and I'd like to change the number from 3,000 to 2,500." It's a simple number change, a couple of digits and you're there. Does the, do you feel that the language, the way the bylaw is formatted and works, that a simple change like that could happen and still preserve the?
I think in the final version, it will definitely be as such. Right now, you know, we took a lot of the technical jargon and put it into the, I keep wanting to call it, regulation. I keep wanting to call this, put it into the regulation, and so, it's not existent in the bylaw, but some of that is going to balance out into that final draft. And so, there will be hard numbers that can be adjusted if need be, you know, making kind of a more minor switch, hopefully, to be able to pass that through.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. And so, we have to make those changes, sort of like there's oversights when you break this whole thing apart, but I think we'll have it. And I think the one thing that I'm sort of, I'm learning a lot about what goes into these bylaws, goes into these bylaws, that kind of stuff, but we have a lot of justification for these numbers in the rules and regs document, not so much in the bylaw. So, I, you know, any further guidance that you would have, and how much of that might we want in the bylaw to help everyone understand, or do we not want it at all? You know, toward reaching that point where we're educating at the same time, including for the future, you know, changes that might be made to it. I think it might be important, because as easily as an amendment to drop it to 2,500 Kelvin could be made, an amendment could be, could be put forth to raise it to 5,600 Kelvin. So, I think if we have some verbiage in there about, a little bit about the reasoning of why it's set at 3,000 Kelvin in the bylaw itself, I think that might give the strongest position.
Yeah, a lot of these bylaws consists of science and art.
Yeah.
And a lot of the art is in the presentation and the ability to be flexible.
Right.
So, good.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
Anyone else, questions, comments?
Mrs. Luttrell?
Well, let me, before I walk away, thank you to Marnie and to Sarah for helping out on the working group. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks to the board for taking this up, for being receptive to it.
Don't run away. So, in response to the letter that we got from the building commissioner and the facilities director, so I'm glad that Sarah and you, Dustin, said that, because I read this letter, and then I clicked on the link for this dark skies, and then I thought that I was reading what I just read in the bylaw.
Yeah.
And some of the tables look like they were cut and paste from the bylaw.
Changed anything.
So, I was confused by the recommendation to model your draft after something that you already modeled your draft after. Also, there was a question on clear definitions for terminology such as residential, non-residential, commercial. Those are just zoning districts.
Correct.
And the, there was also a question of where the lighting districts were throughout the town, and those are also correspond to the zoning districts.
Yes, correct. Which is why we didn't feel the need to explicitly say that in the bylaw, because they're, we state which current zones, the lighting zones would apply to.
Okay, so I'm not misunderstanding that. There's no need for charts to say where they are. They're just the zoning districts.
No, because we use exactly the same language as the current zones exist.
Well, the zoning map would do the same thing.
Exactly.
Okay.
Right, it's going to, they're going to be based on the existing zoning map.
Right.
Zones.
And also, I'm in agreement with you and Sarah that the town should lead by example, and if we were to exempt ourselves, why should anybody else have to follow the bylaw? And I'd like to understand that relationship with National Grid and the streetlights. That was news to me. And our streetlights now aren't hugely bright, so I don't know why we would want to.
No, I mean, they're the typical high-pressure sodium lamps that a lot of the towns have. The biggest argument to change them over, even though the lamps are doing fine, is power, is that conversion to LED saves a lot of electricity. But it's one of those things where you trade off the savings on electricity if you go and put all this blue light in there for ill effects. And a lot of people don't like them.
Now, does the town pay for the cost of the electricity? They do. So, wouldn't we have some say in what they stick in there? No?
And that, yeah, and that's part of the state. And we, we can have some input, but they're National Grid's lights. And it's going to, it's going to take us sitting down with them to. I think sitting down with them to understand exactly what our relationship is, because I think one of the comments was that, it was, I guess, I can't remember offhand, but the supposition that if we have a town standard, that that may jeopardize our relationship with National Grid. I'm not sure that that's the exact direction I would want that relationship to go.
And what was the other? There was also a suggestion, and I can't find it right now, that the, that the percentage change that would trigger compliance with the lighting bylaw be the same as the percentage change that would trigger site plan, but there is no percentage that triggers site plan.
I didn't, I didn't understand.
No, I didn't understand that either. I think that there is some level of concern with, so one bulb goes out, and do we need now to replace all of the bulbs? And what kind of cost burden does that create? And I think, you know, Dustin and I have talked about giving kind of a lead time, you know. about giving kind of a lead time, you know, two years, five years, whatever it is, for, you know, people who are especially in business to be able to become compliant, so that no, when one bulb goes out, you don't have to change them all, but you have to start saving, because in five years, yes, you do have to change them all to 3,000 if they're all at 4,000. So that people do have that expectation that they're gonna have to change eventually.
Okay.
And of course, it's written in as well, because I think there was a comment about a lack of flexibility or something like that in the regulations, but just as the existing bylaw says, the planning board has full authority to grant exemptions of any kind for any of this stuff. So if there's a business that's struggling to meet compliance or something like that, then an exemption can be granted for that.
And there was a, oh, there was also a, a disagreement with the minimum requirements, but there aren't minimum requirements, are there?
No, I think that was an odd, like, I didn't understand it either. I think it had to do with the 3,000 Kelvin or less cutoff, as opposed to giving a range.
Right.
And that's what I was sort of alluding to, in that if I were to recommend a range to the board, it would be 2,200 to 3,000 Kelvin, because 3,000 Kelvin is quite white and quite bright. I think it's the most conservative we can go with for this, and anything underneath that would be best, but anything above that would be unacceptable. I guess that's what they were alluding to.
Okay.
I think it's also worth it to note that there is still dual legislation in the state House and Senate coming down the pipe. It's making progress toward getting to vote on establishing a 3,000 K cutoff for the state.
Yes.
So I think we should keep that in mind and on the horizon, everybody in town, because if we go and pass a bylaw that has got a 4,000 K cutoff, it very well may be superseded by anything that the state does. I think us being ahead of this curve is good for everybody.
Yeah. And the, I just want to reiterate, the 3,000 K is, wasn't just a number picked out of a hat. There was a reason for that, and...
This is IDA recommendation.
Right.
The very model they wanted us to look at. The, I should clarify that the version of the model that's online right now does not include the correlative color cutoff, because when they sat down with IES, this wasn't a thing at that point. Since then, IDA now has IES's language on correlated color, and on their website, they have all their recommendations, which is actually tightened up. It's 2,700 max, down to 2,200 best. So we're still above that, actually. So I think any, any feedback that we get that sort of sees 3,000 Kelvin as too low, I would argue that that's actually quite high with respect to all the recommendations as far as human health and impact on wildlife goes. All the recommendations are coming way back from that. 2,500 Kelvin now, 2,700 Kelvin is considered high.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and to Sarah and Marnie. This is great.
Anyone else? Questions, comments?
Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, and we have discussed this initiative, not the bylaw specifically, but we're highly supportive of your efforts on this. And we know from several presentations, one here and one at the library, that the lower light is, increases safety, it, there's health, human health consequences of this other light, as well as the wildlife, which is what our, you know, our concern is for the commission. And once again, this planning board is leading the charge here, and it's never easy when you're one of the first, but I will let you know you're not alone. There is a Metro West Conservation Alliance, 36 communities that are, have staff that's looking into this, and unfortunately, I don't think they're far enough ahead to provide us some handouts or that sort of public propaganda, not propaganda, but, you know, PR, educational tools, thank you, not propaganda. Educational tools, I'm gonna regret that, educational tools that you can use, but if it becomes, you know, available, I'm sure I will send it to you. I hope you'll be planning to do at least one or two public outreach education. And I'm not sure how helpful it will be, because it's a little bit over my head, but at a prior lighting project in front of you, I'd reached out and was in communication with one of the top wildlife biologists in the world, who sent me wildlife surveys on lighting issues from all continents. And the standards are pretty clear that it's a problem for wildlife, whether it's in Southborough or Africa or South America, Europe. And some of these studies might be, you know, relevant to have as a resource. I'm not sure it relates exactly to our bylaw, but it doesn't hurt. We certainly, I kept it in my, in a file, so I can share that with you. And I'll be happy to share the, any information from the Metro West Conservation Alliance. But again, you guys are leading the charge on great, great work. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Yes?
Timlet, Woodland Road. I was gonna keep quiet, but I heard the suggestion that you might want to add details and bulk up the bylaws opposed to the regulations. I would avoid that temptation. My experience is that the longer the bylaw is, the less likely it is for a town meeting to understand it or to accept it. What has worked really well, I've been involved in a number of efforts on this, is to have a separate document, a handout, that explains what you're trying to do. Frequently asked questions, documents work pretty well. But, you know, keep your purpose statement in a bylaw really short for that reason, and also because you don't want to put in a bylaw things that are controversial or may change as technology or understanding evolves. So, that's that bit of advice. And then on the little detail front, I did look at this quickly this evening. I haven't dug through it in detail, but one thing that jumped out was that you use angles and in degrees in multiple places, and you don't indicate what the baseline is. So sometimes you're talking about pointing up in the sky, and sometimes you're looking at horizontal. You should really qualify those, so that it's clear what's going on.
Anyone else on the lighting? Yes?
Karen Sokol, 16 Newton Street. I wasn't gonna say anything, but when Freddie just mentioned the effect on the wildlife, another point we can all realize is that if it's affecting the wildlife, it's affecting the human life. So, and there have been many studies that show that even things like, it sounds strange, but moonlight will affect all kinds of physiological functions, and people can be ill if they don't get enough of certain kinds of light. So, that's just another point, that I think this is a great idea, and thank you for doing it.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? So, we'll look forward to seeing the, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just one last comment. I think that, based on, you know, the feedback from facilities and building, from the building commissioner, you know, they, and the level of information they put here, it shows that they do have some concerns. I think that would probably help to iron some of those out if the working group maybe met with Lori Lavoli and John Parent, and just maybe go over these items one by one that they are objecting to maybe clarify, and it may shed some light, so to speak, on their concerns that maybe, that, yes, maybe it will help ease their worry, so that, because we want to bring as many people onto the side of this as possible, and when we have support of the town department heads, it's super helpful.
Yeah, I can do that.
So, the public hearing notice will be placed in the newspaper soon, and then the public hearing, if all goes well, would be on January 27th. Look forward to seeing everybody there then. Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion item, Site Plan Review Bylaw, Final Draft Review.
Okay, again, Sarah is going, is managing this project, so she's best suited to give you the rundown on where we are on that. Sure. Yeah, so the Site Plan Review Bylaw change is, again, a much smaller edit. It's taking the minor plan review and putting it under the purview of the planning board versus the review committee. These updates have been made, you know, kind of for a while now. No changes have been made to them since they were kind of first discussed. So I just wanted to bring it back to the table, just to make sure that everybody was comfortable with that language and confident in moving forward, because it's also going to be up for a public hearing on the 27th.
Any questions or comments on that? Very good. We'll move on to the next item, which is a discussion item for the Business Village District Zoning Amendment.
Want me to give a little intro, or are you good?
Well, it's the town planner to update us on this discussion item. Come forward.
Hi, I just wanted to point out that the EDC, the Economic Development Committee, approached planning and asked to be put on the agenda this evening, so that they could prepare, well, they, so they could present the presentation they prepared, and they wanted to present this fresh at tonight's meeting, so that they could interpret what you're seeing on the presentation directly, without any misinterpretation, getting this ahead of the time, and then reading it and maybe not fully understanding what their approach is. Yeah, we can work that out. Yeah, will it come back? Okay. As long as I can get it back. I get it on a PDF when they're done.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you very much. My name is Tom Collins. I'm the new Chair of the Economic Development Committee. I think I've been in office now for two weeks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, hi, Rob Anderson, Southborough resident. I am on the Economic Development Committee as well. Thank you.
And between the two of us, I've got 42 years of real estate experience, and...
I can, I've been working in economic development in Massachusetts for close to 17 years. That Community Development Director up in the town of Billrica, so have some experience in planning and economic development.
Excellent.
So what we hope to do tonight is to just give a, kind of a update on where we are in the process. I think, as you remember, we have a placeholder for an article in the warrant for an overlay district for the downtown area. And we're working on our way through that document, and we'll have it ready for a legal review, and we'll have to submit it to you once we get it finished. But we thought we would take this time to sort of give you a sense of where we're headed, where we've been and where we're headed. So, to start off, talk about the background. The Downtown Initiative is something that the EDC has been working on for a couple of years. There's been any number of forums with members of the town. There was a survey taken, and based on that, it seemed that there was a fairly large group of people in town who were interested in seeing some economic development in the downtown business district. We had a meeting before this committee, and we talked about the right way to go about getting that zoning change. I think Dave McKay was presenting at that time, and we talked about trying to use existing things like the ZAC proposal. And I think at that time, the planning board asked us to take a shot at it and bring it back to you for review. And that's where we're trying to get to, and we'll be there pretty soon to have something to submit to you for review. In order to have the expertise to do this, we applied for and were awarded a grant from the state, $50,000, half of which is being used for the zoning part, half of which is being used to study the wastewater treatment that would be necessary in order to support kinds, certain kinds of uses in the downtown. And we are now at the point where the, Mr. Purple has reviewed that and given us the go-ahead. So that is underway. The goals are to develop a consensus on a development strategy for the downtown. We've met with a number of committees, this committee. We've met with the Selectmen several times, including just a couple of weeks ago. We've met with CHOPS. So we're trying to make sure that we understand everything that all the different committees are trying to accomplish, and make sure that we've got support from those groups. We'd like to send a clear signal to people that are developers or investors that there's a pathway to development in downtown, should people who own property downtown wish to sell. We don't have any vacant land downtown. We're just trying to set a condition that says there's a pathway here if all those, if somebody has a desire to develop, and somebody has a desire to sell their property, or that somebody that owns a property would like to develop. The process that we've gone through is one of trying to educate the community. We've provided photographs and drawings of the former downtown, kind of showing all that's been lost in downtown, from what it was to what it is today. We've created some renderings. We're not developers. We're not looking to say that this is what it is, but this is what it could be. And so we had, we hired some, a firm to create some renderings for us. And as I said, we've met with a number of different boards and committees. And we continue to work with the planning board tonight and with the Selectmen.
And I think this is the perfect opportunity for me to pop in. I think I had mentioned, due to economic development, I was the Regional Director for the State's Office of Business Development, covering 44 communities up and down the 495. I think the one thing I can say is that economic development is a competitive marketplace. And there are opportunities that perhaps Southborough might be missing, without some level of flexibility within the zoning, and perhaps allowing the Economic Development Committee to be a little bit more aggressive when talking with those people who can come here and invest and bring those types of amenities that we would like to see. And I think one of the things that we discussed at the committee level was whether or not we wanted to directly go after and try to change the zoning, or work with an overlay, which would give us a little bit more flexibility, and also give the development community a little bit more flexibility. When you think about doing an overlay, the existing zoning remains in place. And that overlay allows developers the opportunity to choose one or the other. What that does is it allows new ideas to come forward, the idea of mixed use, such as retail on the first floor with residential up above, a mix of restaurants and offices. It is something that would put us in a better competitive standpoint compared to the other 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, which we are competing against. In terms of the Downtown Initiative and what we're looking to do, this would, this mixed-use zoning that we're working on would only apply to the downtown business district. I think one of the concerns could be that if we changed it, if we tried changing the underlying zoning without the overlay, it would apply to areas that might have different strategies and different goals. So what we are looking to do is focus on the downtown. And so, we've got the district, you'll see in the presentation and up on the screen... And so we've got the, the district, you'll see in the presentation and up on the screen, but it, it's a very kind of focused area to bring in those types of amenities and investment. Maybe if you want to show some pictures next up on the screen?
Absolutely.
So you'll notice that this is mixed use. The picture in the upper left-hand corner actually came from the CHOPS report. This is the, the Park Street area that shows the mix of uses. That is a little bit more pedestrian-friendly. That would make people want to come down to the Southborough downtown, spend a little bit of time, hopefully live and spend some money in those stores or even, even work down there as well. So the idea of mixed use is not unique to Southborough. It's also not unique to the, the current economic development climate. Back in the day, the pharmacist used to work in the store downstairs and live up above. So the idea of mixed use and creating that village center is not something unique and it's not something that would change the character of the town. And I think some of the, the purposes for doing this is, as I said before, to make it a little bit more pedestrian-friendly. If there were people living there, if there were those restaurants, if there are the places that people could work. I, I would say if there were a craft brew pub in the downtown, I'd definitely spend more time down there. I, I, I think diversity in terms of the uses in the downtown would be unique and bring in some of those amenities and workers and vis, and visitors that we want. I, I know everyone would like to be proud of our downtown and the more people that we can get to experience that, from stopping in the shops, coming down for meals, would be beneficial. When you update the, the commercial uses and get that investment, it also helps the tax revenue for the town. I'm not sure about anyone else, but when the residential tax, taxes keep on going up for everyone, look to find ways in which to keep that down. That involves some type of growth and that involves some type of investment. And what we want to do is target as many potential developers as possible so that they will make the type of investment and bring the amenities that we want. The overlay and the level of flexibility and control that that would give to the planning board would be beneficial, such that the planning board could actually take a beneficial role in helping keep residential tax rates low for the town, which I think everyone would like to see. I, I think one of the things that is especially true, especially in the suburban communities, is the, the live-work-play way of, way of life right now. If we can have people who enjoy being out here, like the short commute, and have those amenities nearby and actually help us fill some of the vacant office space that we have on Route 9. It's, it is the, one of the things that is lacking in Southborough is the amenities. So from an economic development standpoint, if we're comparing ourselves to our other communities, we need to think with a flexible mindset and start moving towards that mixed use, let's call it avenue, that all of our competitors are doing. And I, I think the, one of the things that the overlay will allow us to do is to work on some design guidelines to make sure that the, the visual character of the town remains in place so that we don't lose those things that makes Southborough so, so unique and such a great place to live. So coming up, through our discussions at the EDC, there are certain uses that we'd like to see in the mixed-use overlay district, mixed-use development. Some element of multifamily, as I said, kind of the residential above the retail. Make it easier for developers to come up with ideas. The less constraints that you put on a developer, the more developers you're going to have speak to you. If you put up roadblocks for developers coming into a community, there are competitors that they're going to want to talk to. So there's a level of flexibility that all overlay districts should try to have. I think we'd want to make sure that we aim for the right mix of professional offices, perhaps some artists' live-work galleries and the like, and some of those things that kind of provide the amenities for people working on Route 9 and for residents as well. So I may have spoken to a lot of these, but those are all things that we are working through at the EDC and will hopefully come back with a, a more thorough document on that.
Just in the summary page, we sort of looked at the master plan, the ZAC documents, and, and they all sort of point to this idea of mixed use. The CHOPS plan is, is interested, that doc, that picture that we showed there was from their plan that showed building housing above the existing morrows and the existing market. And as, as Rob just said, the overlay district does not change the underlying zoning, so it doesn't have any impact on the other vis, village business districts. It would simply be for the downtown. And we, we think that what we hope to come back with will also have design guidelines and FAR tables so that the size of the building will be appropriate to the size of the lot and, and rather than put an arbitrary number in there. And that's it. That's our update.
Excellent, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments. I guess I'll start with the one thing that I heard that is quite different would be the design guidelines. We don't have anything like that in town. Works in a lot of other towns. Sometimes there's a lot of pushback. People don't want the government to tell them what type of windows they can have or columns and things. So that'd be interesting to see how, how you would present those design guidelines. I'm sure, you know, there's plenty of really good examples where the commercial people can work with them as opposed to feel that they're being restrained. So that's kind of new. I know it's been talked about since I've been on the board on and off, but mostly off, is to not really have the, the design guidelines. And then one, one other comment would be, if you look at the zoning, the, I forget the number, although I bet the town planner remembers, 174-dash-something, which is the village business district.
Right.
And it's one-size-fits-all. It, it covers the four villages. And what I would, I think we had this discussion about a year ago, one of the very first things to do is to separate the downtown into its own village business district, maybe leave the others alone at, at this time, but then have, have the downtown village business district stand alone with its own code number. And then you could, you could accomplish what you're asking, what you're looking to do without having the concerns from the other villages.
And that's the reason to create the overlay, is that the overlay would only be for that area which is defined as the downtown village district in the existing zoning. The other village districts, as Rob said, might have very different strategies for what might happen there in the future. So this would be focused solely on that, which is the reason for using the overlay vehicle. And the reason within the, so if you're creating an overlay district that says you can either go with the existing zoning that's there or you can have this other zoning that's more flexible, which means you can do more by right, the control factor for that is that you then have design guidelines, which if they're not living up to the design guidelines, you have the right to stop it. So you get what you are planning for, not, it's, there's no loss of control. And so that's why we, we put the two side by side so that you can create something, and I've said this at a number of different meetings, we don't have a lot of vacant, we don't have any vacant land down there. Everything's owned by someone. There's something on almost every lot. All we're trying to do is set the conditions that say, if somebody wanted to come in and say, take Park Street and hook up with the owner of that land and to try to do something there, there's a, there's a way to get in there. You'll have certain rights to develop if, as long as you're within the envelope of the rules of the overlay and that you're conforming with the, with the design guidelines. And so a developer has a much more certain sense that they're going to be able to go forward. Takes a lot of cost and, and, and time to get land assembled and, and all of those things, and so there's a lot of risk there. So that they have a sense that if we can go through this process and we'll have this and we can go forward with a plan that we think, one, can make money, two, can be financed, three, can be tenanted, then you have a much more likely scenario in which you'd be able to attract somebody to, to make those changes.
I'll open it up to the board. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Littrell.
Thank you. You had mentioned that you had, have been trying to gain collaboration and going to different boards. Have you thought about coming to the master plan committee, which is looking at these?
We have a member on the master plan committee.
But have you thought about coming and giving a presentation and having a discussion with the master plan committee?
I don't have the answer to that. I'm new in my position. I can't remember whether we actually...
Well, it's...
Sounds like an invitation.
It was. I, yes. I, I, I think the previous master plan did bring up the fact that mixed use was a goal for the, the town of Southborough. So, and I, I would have to imagine until the, the next master plan is in place, we can follow that. Coming in front of the master plan committee should kind of help and encourage this type of development and zoning changes going forward because I, I suppose the strategy would be to see the, the right type of development. So if that is an invitation, then I, I'm sure someone on the EDC would welcome going.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. The ULI report also recommended many aesthetic changes downtown, like the quick hits, like green space and sidewalks and benches and more attractive lighting. Is the EDC looking into any beautification initiatives?
We have not.
Okay.
I mean, we're not developers, so it's not, I would say that that would be part of the guidelines, what the setback should be. Get the developers to upgrade park, sidewalks, and lighting and all of those kinds of things. Those would be all part of. In order for a developer to go forward and have those, that flexibility, you'd put those kinds of things in the guidelines.
Okay. And is there a town...
With a voice like mine, who needs the microphone?
The folks at home can't hear you. That's why you need the microphone. We can't.
Well, I was just listening at home. No, you can't. One of the thoughts, after having met with some of the departments concerning downtown infrastructure, is that there really hasn't been anything budgeted. So that to the degree that the overlay would let us negotiate things with a proponent, we're hoping that some of the sidewalk improvements, some of the lighting improvements, what we're doing in phase two down there is the same lights that are there. So there are some things that already pass, pass by. Forget the zoning, just how we're improving that, improving that area leads us to have to look to others to help us do it. So we're also looking for that quid, I was going to say quid pro quo, maybe that's not the right word to use right now.
No.
But a, you know, we'll do something for you, you do something for us so that, I mean, we don't even have the money for the flower pots type of thing that people envision. So it, it's not that we're not thinking about design, but with that, I'd like to point out that Billarica was sitting up in the back. She has a whole draft design plan for that downtown area. Do you want to talk about that?
No.
No? Okay.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there a town that you're like modeling us on that this has been successful? Because if you look at Westboro, they certainly have much more commercial development than we do. They have a lot going on in their Route 9 and their residential tax rate is way higher than ours. So if bringing in more business reduces the residential tax rate, what's Westboro doing that it's not working there?
Well, we're, we're not trying to just solve the residential tax rate problem.
Isn't that the charge of the EDC?
It is part of the charge of the EDC, correct, yes. But the Downtown Initiative is not going to solve... If you look at the map of, of the, of the town of Southborough, half the land is owned by non, not-for-profits. Then there's the, the land that the town uses itself, then there's the conservation land, then there's all the residential land. There isn't a lot of commercial land to develop. And I think personally, with 40 years in the real estate business, the way you can get the biggest bang for the buck is to change the zoning, especially along Route 9, and make it for higher and bigger uses that you could create more value.
So what's the bang for the buck that you're trying to get? That's the question I'm asking.
I, I don't understand the question. With the, with the Downtown Initiative?
Well, you're, well, with downtown, with Route 9, having more flexible zoning to invite in developers?
Well, currently, we're only asking for more flexible zoning in the downtown.
Okay. And so that, so that, the goal of that isn't to diversify the tax base?
It will be, that would be a side effect of it, but it's also to create amenities in the town. You know, we have a handful of restaurants in the town. We have a downtown area that, you know, we have a barber shop, we have a, a restaurant, and we have a...
Two restaurants. Pizza Place and...
Pizza Place, yeah.
So I don't think there's anybody, well, I can't speak for everybody, but that would argue with bringing more vitality to the downtown.
Right.
I just want to make sure that what we do, what we're doing is not going to invite in things that we don't want in the downtown.
We agree with that.
Yeah. And perhaps maybe you could share what some of those things that you don't want downtown that they are? I mean, I think, at least from our CBA, EDC standpoint, we do not want to see drive-through restaurants. We do not want to see a Dunkin' Donut down there. We would like to see places that people will come to and stay and then perhaps walk around the downtown neighborhood. So if there are certain things that, I, I would put this out to the full board, if there are things that you did not want to see down there, coming to an EDC meeting and sharing what those are would be hugely helpful. I think the opportunity to see some type of business growth, and I, I think that's kind of one of the key tasks of the EDC, is when you diversify that type of growth with perhaps mixed use or different types of uses in areas that are primed for seeing that redevelopment, it would be a good thing. So, you know, I, I would, I would welcome you to share those things that perhaps you wouldn't want to see in the downtown. I would encourage every resident in town to do the same thing.
I have, I mean, there are many things I don't want to see, like five-story buildings, that would be one.
Right. And, and so those would be the things that would be in the, in the, in the zoning. And those would be the things that would be underneath control. I, I would also say that, at, at least from someone who's been in economic development here in Massachusetts for close to 17 years, the, the market sometimes speaks about what the needs are. are and what can go in certain locations. Given the parking that would need to come along with a five-story building, it's not quite... It would not be, I would say...
Usable.
Feasible to have a five-story building down there. But, some level of flexibility for a developer to have a two, two-and-a-half story, maybe even a three-story building is, because we have that capability and can work that into the zoning. So, you know, that's where I think sharing those ideas about what you might not want to see there would be very useful.
My last question is on the design guidelines. Aren't those subjective? Because this board got pushback from your committee on special permits being subjective. So, if you're switching one subjective thing for another, what are you accomplishing?
Well, you have to start with the premise that the town wants economic development. If it doesn't want economic development, it doesn't matter how specific a guideline would be, it could be stopped. And so, one of the things that I said in front of the Board of Selectment is that every committee in this town can do the work that it does, but there's no executive who's saying, "Okay, let's go forward with this plan." And until that happens, even if we pass an overlay at town meeting, it doesn't mean anything's going to happen downtown. So, everything's got subjectivity to it. It's a question of whether or not you want to put something forward. So, our concern about the lot and the denial of a permit was that that's a development that had gone an awfully long way through the process, and Julie Connolly had come forward and said the EDC was in favor of that, and it was denied. And it just seemed, it just seemed like it was pretty late in the process for it to have been denied. But that is your charge.
Were you all set, Mimi?
Yes, thank you.
Got to grab a mic, Kathy.
This subjectivity in site plan review and this subjectivity and design guidelines, but where do they come in the numeric order of review? With the site plan guideline, I'm sorry, with the guidelines, your project gets approved, and then you negotiate what, the details about how it's going to look, what kind of awnings you might have, what kind of shutters you might have, colors and brick to fit other parts of the downtown instead of clash with it. And that comes after you've already agreed that that use in that location is a good thing, and then you start negotiating design. You don't... So, that subjectivity is less of a fear to either the town or to the developer, because they have more certainty that there actually is the ability to come in, build on this site, and get a financial return.
Okay. So, thank you. Appreciate the overview and the heads up. So, I just had a question around... So, I must say, while you're presenting, I had to Google... I'm a new member to the planning board, so I had to Google what an overlay district is. So, in your approach and feasibility of this, creating an overlay district for the specific business district, are you looking to override what currently exists, which is a special permit or process? Because what I, how we do things now is a special permit, and that comes in with quite a bit of subjectivity in the bylaw, if you've seen that. And so, I guess for clarity, for what Mimi was saying, it was my same question, is the design details, and how do those, you know, how would they feed in, or how do you envision that? I know it's not a done process, but how are you thinking about it relative to that current special permit?
So, the existing, the way I understand this, the existing zoning would stay in place. There would be an overlay on top of that that would say, "If you come in and you do this, and you do these things, you can by right build a certain kind of building for a certain kind of use, based on the size of the lot and all of those things, subject to these guidelines." And I don't know the level of, you know, I'm not a developer, so I don't know the level of those, but it would be the size of the building, the height of the building, how much of the area of the lot can be covered by the building, what parking is required, what the setback requirements are, all of those kinds of things. And then the design part, let's say, would be that it says that it must be a Cape Cod style, whatever. And so, you would spell out certain requirements of what it has to look like and feel like, so that you have that when the developer comes in and says that he wants a permit because he's going to do all of those things, he gets his permit. And then, as Kathy said, then you get the review, and the review's within a certain envelope. And just as there are here with negotiations about bushes and grass and all of those things, you'd still have that, but it would be within the context of a certain pre-agreed-on design.
So, just one comment. So, I would see that, I guess, in the role of what Planning Board does, is that would be a much more collaborative engagement to really get down to those design details, and that we would work a little bit more collaboratively. I know the mission was to send you guys out to develop this, but I would see as it comes to a little bit of a closer working, that that's something, hopefully, you see as a partnership to work with us.
We'd expect that.
Thank you for the efforts.
I just have one more question. The overlay, is that the same as the downtown business village now? So, it's the exact same footprint?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you. Appreciate you coming in and showing this. No question, the pictures you put are, I mean, beautiful. You know, it'd be... Who wouldn't?
There is much to show what is not as what it is.
Right. But it's kind of, it's funny that you use one statement that, you know, "We want to keep the rural characteristic of the downtown, but show pictures that are completely different." And you admit that, you know, none of those buildings are...
Of the town, of the downtown.
So, it's just...
We can show you the pictures of what downtown used to look like. It used to be a lot nicer looking than it is today.
So, and if... So, the thing that, I guess I always think of, I live pretty close to downtown. I go there regularly. I go to the Moros Market.
Me, too.
The market on a regular basis. And I usually struggle to find parking. So, and on Saturday, I know with the cafe open and everything, the streets are usually lined to both sides. The thing that always echoes in the back of my mind, and I'm not opposed to mixed use or anything, is like, where are people going to park? And as you said, too, that the way the lots are, there's no real area to expand or anything like that. The last project that came before us to build in the downtown struggled with the amount of parking that they were going to have. There were a lot of back and forth on how that was going to fit, where even the applicant was hoping to get more parking actually on the street through the town. So, and the other piece for me, again, just since we're discussing this, is if we do put, say, residential use above a restaurant, which you have a lot of parking you're going to need for a restaurant to keep that viable, then you're going to have people living above it. Places that I've seen where that's really worked, is somewhere more condensed, where people might not need a car, they walk or use public transportation. I don't think that's really viable, personally, in the downtown, but that's me, you know?
And if I might, you're 100% correct. It might not be viable. I think what we're hoping is that with that mixed-use zoning, we can have those conversations and have the flexibility to let developers come to us with a concept that they believe might work. And whether or not it's a restaurant on the first floor or housing up above it, or a dentist, or a law firm that wants a downtown presence, that might be what the developer brings to the table. I think the one thing that we're struggling with right now, and lots of communities are, is without that flexible zoning, those kind of outside-of-the-box ideas to bring that growth, job creation, and vitality to the downtowns and the developable area is not happening. And so, even if it's not going to end up being a restaurant on the first floor with housing up above it, at least we will begin having those conversations with the development community who can bring them to the table, which is, I think, a great thing for the town of Southborough, to get people thinking about us as a place where they want to invest. Because if that's the case, then we can think about filling in some of those empty office buildings and, quite frankly, attract some new residents as well.
So, you feel that having a downtown that with mixed use and restaurants down there is going to be more attractive for people to come into the office buildings on Route Nine?
Yes. It's the amenities close by, you know, and...
So, then we're going to have the traffic from the office buildings driving all the way over there, trying to figure out where to park, to go over there, and clogging up the downtown in the middle of the day, because we don't have any parking down there. Is that right? I mean, I'm just trying to logically think this through. This is a discussion, right?
Yes.
And that's where I always get hung up.
Mm-hmm.
That's where I just get stuck every single time, where if, you know, if you're going to have mixed use and, say, apartments above a building, I would say almost put it down more by the train station, where someone could actually jump on the, jump on the train, go into Boston, they could get their groceries and everything, come out, and you could have it right there.
Well, you know, it's...
You have the infrastructure for it.
Oh, and that's, you know, and that's, that's the great thing about zoning overlay language when it's in there. What we are proposing right now is a mixed-use overlay for the downtown. And there might be other strategies where you can put that same overlay onto different districts within the town. So, if you believe that perhaps nearby the train station, we actually want to encourage that type of use. The zoning, if it is developed correctly, can go there as well. Or, you could write a different overlay for, let's call it, the train station district, which allows us to still have those conversations with the development community. I think that the opportunity to have development, and I'm speaking as someone who is a resident, who does drive on the roads, but who is also on the Economic Development Committee, we should be encouraging those developers to have those conversations with us. The mixed-use zoning allows us that capability.
So, the other, say, thing that I get stuck with when you say "by right" in an overlay district is sitting on this side of the table. I've been berated, as a light term, probably numerous times, by a developer saying, "By right, I can do this." And then, trying to force us in a way that "You don't have a choice but to approve this" is the way it comes across. So, I'm not 100% comfortable saying, "By right, they can do this," with whatever the overlay is, without being very specific on what it could be. Because while I agree that, you know, if someone came in with something that really worked, and they partnered with the neighborhood, and the other businesses were there, and everyone was for it, I think, you know, sitting on this board, not as long as it's done, but as long as I have, we've been very accommodating, and, you know, I think we've worked well with most of the applicants that have come forth, and have made things work. But, to try to, you know, theorize what could be in there and say, "By right," just say, put a kind of blank, not blanket, but to say, "Yeah, we're going to allow these types of things and not have really specific plans," and then the possibility of someone coming in and saying, "By right, I can do this," puts us in a very difficult spot on this side of the table. And that's, that's one thing that, you know, I don't want to be in going forward. I don't want to put the neighborhood in that situation, or the business owners that are currently there. You know, I want them, I don't want them to get the impression either that I'm dissatisfied with what they have, because, like I said, I go to Moros Market all the time, and I go to the pizza place. My wife has her nails done at the nail shop. We go to the bank. There's a lot of downtown surfaces that I use that I don't want, think that I'm not happy with them.
Go ahead, Kathy. Microphone.
There's two things that you raised, that I've narrowed it down to anyways. And I guess I'll start with the latter, this concern about site design and giving things by right and that sort of thing. When we were doing our research, we looked at communities that had design regulations, and we looked at the structure of successful downtowns zoning relative to how do you define what can be there and what can't be there, and what size and scope it should be, and the parking necessary to support it. What we can do is create a list of all these communities that we've looked at and summarize by, not in depth, but, you know, bullet points of what the communities are doing, because we did it, each of us divided up a stack and read them and then came back and reported. The other question you asked about, or someone asked about, "What is design and where are you looking?" And Westboro is not exactly the poster child for the success of site design. Okay, don't get mad at me. I have, that's where I grew up, but the... We were looking at some other communities. Grafton is new. I was kind of surprised. Grafton's new to the game, and they've got the design regulations, and they've got a design review board, and they've got the mixed use, and they've really got... That was kind of the community we came down saying, "Not so far away from us, similar in the sense of historic, beautiful downtown." It was, it was the community where our town, the movie, was filmed. So, we are doing our homework. And another thing I'd like to throw out, that as the detailed wording gets done, that over the next couple of weeks, you've got a meeting, a week that you're free of a meeting, and I know you will probably, you know, get nervous and shakes with no meeting, so we have a meeting, and we're, would like to ask you to come and review with us the actual language and the, where the colons and the semicolons go type of thing, so that people get familiar with this. We're not trying to say, "Trust us," but we can show you at that time the communities we looked at, what we liked, what we didn't like, what we extracted and put in. But I can tell you, Grafton, to my surprise, again, being a local, that it has moved ahead so rapidly, because they feel they're losing out to the communities around them. And let's look at us. Who are our neighbors? Marlboro, Westboro, and Framingham. And Grafton's worried? So, we've got the same issues if we're going to... And I'm not even saying diversify our tax rate in such a way that my single-family home rate doesn't go up, but decrease the amount of traffic that we do need by having services here in town. I have to go out of town a lot for the stuff that I need, and I'd prefer to see it here. And a lot of people did when they answered our survey, what the kinds of services they wanted Southboro to provide. So, you know, we're responding to a lot of masters.
Right. And I know the survey, I've heard that a lot, but I think that the count for the actual responses to the survey was under 200, correct?
It's 400.
400. 400, okay. So under 400?
Over 400. I don't know exactly, the number, 412 or something.
Okay. The, but it, and the number of responses for mixed-use downtown was, what? Out of the 400?
She's out of the...
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't have it memorized, but it was-
But that wasn't like a particular direct question you argued for mixed use?
Need a microphone.
There was not a direct question that, "Do you want mixed use?" But, "Do you want to revitalize downtown? Do you want to see more variety in restaurants, retail? What uses are you looking for?" So, I mean, we can, I can pull up-
It'd be great to see the data, though, I'm just curious. Because I know the response, because when we had the master plan meeting, we were, we had, how many people there? The open forum? Yeah, the visioning?
Forty or so.
Yeah, 40 people. Which, you know, and we try to advertise that as much as possible to get everything out there and, you know, there were views kind of all over the place on what those wanted, needed for the town.
I think seven of them were EDC.
Yeah. So then, the other piece too, I mean Kathy, the biggest thing is still like parking. Like I struggle with the parking aspect with mixed-use downtown, period. Just how that gets resolved. Unless you put it underground, are you, I mean, no, I, like, I've been trying to think outside the box-
I think we might flood it if we put it underground.
Under, agree.
There's a couple of things. We've got that small parcel of land which potentially could provide some parking. There, the picture for what the Park Street revitalization area could look like has a lot of green right in the middle. That could be decreased a little to create parking for those spaces, right, those types of uses right there. If, in someplace, there, the building on Boston Road that Falcone now owns, the red one with the-
Twenty-one Boston.
Yeah. That one is a tiered building, so you could actually put in parking and not, you have it even visible from the street as you were driving by, but there'd be more parking available. There are places that we could be creative. But when we're asking the developer to give us creative solutions to any place in doing development, we have to show them what's in it for them. They're not, they're not there for charity. So, I mean, we've got to play with the market and make it work for both of us.
Just on by right. Would by right even come before this board, or wouldn't that just be a building permit?
I was going to specifically ask relative to that. So if the, if what you're proposing gives the proponent two choices, the existing Village Business District zoning, which requires a special permit approval, under the existing zoning.
I believe that there are actually some by-right uses in the Village Business District already.
There are.
Yeah, okay.
Regardless of what it is, it requires a special permit.
For the, is that a site plan special permit for everything?
It's site plan approval, which is a simple majority, and a special permit, which is a supermajority, four out of the five.
Even on the by-right uses?
Yes.
Okay.
So if the proponent decides to do the overlay piece, how would the board, how would the board vote? By what means would the board vote to approve? Three, simple majority, special permit, or something else? If you haven't-
I believe that that would be by three, as site plan approval, because the uses would be allowed. But as part of that process, it's collaborative with the Southborough staff to bring in some of those things that like to see, such that-
You're using the term "uses." It's not just uses, it's size, it's-
Yeah.
-shape, it's, so it's not just the uses.
That's the site plan part.
That's the site plan.
So you're saying that regardless of which way the developer wants to go, both, either one would require a site plan approval?
That's correct.
Yes.
But with the overlay, that would be all they need?
So-
No special permit? Is that what you're saying?
Just the way I think about this is that the reason you create an overlay district is you want something to happen there. And you want to control what that something is. And you want it to be a process that would attract a developer, right? That they know, "If I follow this path, I've created this dream, I know I can get there. I know there's a way to get there." So that's why you would create an overlay district. If you don't want anything to happen down there, you just leave it the way it is and each parcel will come up and have the uses that are available to it. We think, based on, I'm new to the committee, a year, I wasn't around for the survey, but based on what we've heard in a forum that we had, not the most recent one, but the one before that, we had a fairly large turnout and we had people that seemed to want it. The last one we had, we had a mix of people, just as you did, that you'd create an overlay district in order to make the process seem more straightforward and more likely to have success. But yes, in the end, you'd have design guidelines and they'd have to be a site plan review. I think in the Grafton example, they've created a separate design board, which would have people like architects and such that would review it and would probably report, I don't, I didn't read it, but they'd probably report to the planning board and say, "It meets with our approval." And then you'd have site, final site plan review. And it gets set up anyway that, that we set it up.
Well, that's something I think you need to clarify, which is, by what vote does the planning board approve what you're proposing?
Yep.
Would you be against-
Microphone. Microphone.
Enough people at home can name you. Would you be against it if it were simple majority?
I don't know. We have to see what you're proposing, but-
Well, we're telling you what we're proposing. It was how it got approved was the question.
No, the question is, it's really simple. By what vote or votes would the planning board approve?
And if I say "simple majority" is the answer-
One vote for site plan approval, no special permit.
No special permit.
That's what you're saying?
Site plan review and design guideline.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else on this?
I'm just asking you, I'll-
No, we don't, we-
If that's a death knell to the whole-
You need a microphone.
No, I, I think one of the things that, and this, it seems to be one of the things I keep on hitting upon, it's the level of flexibility. There are uses and, let's say, size restrictions that you actually want to encourage, and those can be by right. But you also want to leave some element of control, such that, to use an example, you don't end up with something that's five stories. So there are means by which you can write the zoning overlay language, so that there are some uses that are by right, which would allow a developer to come forward with a project with certain uses that would require a site plan review, simple majority. But there would also be some of those potential uses or potential sizes that could require a special permit, which would be the supermajority, which would allow the planning board a little bit more control to guide either for or against, that type of thing. I think that's all in the language and what the EDC is working towards right now, such that not only does the planning board feel comfortable, but the other two people who are involved in this as well, that is, the developer and the residents, feel like they will get something that will complement the downtown, which could use some further investment. So I think that's part of what we're working on right now. And as Kathy had mentioned, coming to the EDC meeting coming up would be hugely useful for offering that feedback as the language is crafted.
Still working on it. Correct?
Yeah, when is the meeting?
Okay. We-
When is it?
Thursday. It's Thursday at 6:30.
Thursday, we're going to, we hope to have the final draft of it and we will vote as a committee.
We have a number of remaining things on our agenda tonight.
Sure.
I think we spent quite a bit of time on this, I think it was very productive. And at least from my perspective, come a long way in the last year.
Yeah.
Really. So I hope that our feedback was productive.
No, it's helpful.
Yeah, no, it's going to be definitely helpful because the language has to, like, make sure that you feel comfortable supporting it. And should a developer come forward with a project that you like, it can go through quickly. I think from my perspective in economic development, streamlining the permitting process and the time from application submission till a shovel in the ground is one of the best things that can happen for anyone looking to invest in a community. And I think this helps.
Anything else from anybody?
I'd like to talk about timing, but I need a microphone.
I just want to say, I can't make the, this Thursday, I have a CPC meeting, so don't take offense, I won't be there.
The 10th is a deadline for having a draft verbiage of any, so that's what, why we were trying to talk to you before then. But you are the one who calls the public hearings. So, and so that allows us to amend things based upon the public, a public hearing. So we can work, like, the following week with you on reviewing things, or another week out and talk about it and then can vote to hold the public hearings. Whether you vote to hold the public hearings and then decide you're not going to support the article or you're, hold the public hearings and you decide to be a co-sponsor, but the aces are all in your hand.
Yes, ma'am.
Karen Sokal, 16 Newton Street, Southborough. There are a number of things I'd like to touch on, appreciate if you're just listening for a minute. I agree that we could definitely use some amenities in town, but one of the things we really need is a grocery store, as you mentioned. And that really isn't going to fit in downtown Southborough.
It's not going to fit anywhere in Southborough.
You need a microphone.
Right. Yeah, so if I could just finish what I was saying out of-
For all of us lifelong residents who have wanted a grocery store, we have done the research with private developers. Super grocery stores are all they'll look at. We don't have a site big enough and it requires more parking. So our sites even get smaller when we try to provide the parking. So we don't have the infrastructure of the sewage treatment, we don't have a lot large enough, and we don't have the parking. And that's with people actively marketing for grocery stores.
The site right across from the transfer station would have been awesome, but I really would just like to get on with what I was saying. So anyway, I agree that there could be some amenities, but I, the downtown Southborough is not very big. It's not as big as Westborough, it's not as big as Hudson, it's not Framingham, it's not Marlborough, it's just tiny compared to those places. And the businesses that are already there, and I think we have zoning to accommodate the small businesses that are already there and that could be there. And I think an 8,000-square-foot structure of any kind or nine, what, nine dwellings, nine units per acre of mixed use is going to make it very, very crowded and there's going to be a tremendous amount of traffic. Already, even now, because I live on Newton Street, Route 30 backs all the way up into downtown from the bridge over the reservoir on some mornings. It's trafficky, it's a lot of traffic. Try crossing Main Street at 5:00 PM when you're on foot. We don't really need a lot more traffic. Newton Street has become like the Indianapolis 500 at quitting time. There are six children under the age of 10 between 16 Newton Street and Southborough Center, which is like about 500 yards. And people drive up and down that street at 50 miles an hour. So although the medical center is good, it has really increased the traffic and it's made it dangerous on Newton Street. So I'm not really, you know, if these things aren't really taken into account, I don't, I don't think it's that, you know, that it's not really going to work. The other thing is, the way things start out is the way they generally continue. And I've been hearing about this survey that was done and I've been hearing about all this feedback you got, but nobody, and I just spoke to a whole bunch of people on Newton Street today, nobody has ever heard of this survey, they don't know anything about it. And please don't interrupt me again, thank you.
No, I won't, but I will wait till you finish. But I don't want to be told something like-
So if you really want to get feedback, then you, you make sure that you communicate what you have in mind in a way that you will actually get, communicate from the, communication from the people who will be most impacted. You've mentioned the stakeholders. Well, all the people who live in the downtown area are stakeholders and I really didn't see any of those names on the ULI stakeholders list of people who gave you feedback. There was none of it. And nobody on Newton Street even knows what that is. They're like, and none of those stakeholders live downtown, you know? And there's a couple of people on Lattice Square Road, but most of them don't live downtown. There's a couple of people who have businesses, but most people don't live downtown. I don't know where this survey was, but it didn't get to a lot of people. You can say you had the survey, but you, you know, "It was under my shoe" or something. But, you know, they didn't get the survey, so they couldn't respond to the survey. Most people in the downtown, they don't know about it, so-
Are you ready for a response?
No, I'm not.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, that's just not polite, please. I really think the public hearing needs to be made, the public needs to be made aware, the people who are the butters need to be made aware. St. Mark's is a wonderful example. They wanted to do this, this new dormitory. All of us, even, even me, you know, I live two streets away, but I got a certified letter. Please come and tell us what you think. That's what needs to happen. Not, this almost feels like it's being like, you know, like snuck under. And you might say, "Well, that wasn't our intention," but that's how it feels. And if you really want people's feedback, you would get it. And it also makes me question, what is the real motive here? And if it's not just, the motive is just to make the developers a bunch of money? Because another thing that you haven't really talked about is who's going to pay with nine dwellings per acre for the water treatment plant? There was a town in this area that had a whole bunch of dwellings made and then after all those dwellings were sold, the developer knew that a water treatment plant needed to go in, but the people who bought those dwellings didn't. And then they were subsequently, after they'd already paid a great deal of money for the dwellings, were socked with a $70,000 bill each to pay for a water treatment plant that they didn't know was coming. So there's a lot of things to consider here. And I'd like a lot more, to see a lot more transparency with your project. Thank you.
I'd like to speak to the transparency of the survey. The survey was, was done on computer and was made available to everyone because it was also available to be made out at the library and different public places in town. We had posters up all over town that this was going on. It was discussed on the townwide blog and it was discussed on the town hall blog. It was put in the, advertised in the church bulletins. We put posters up on all of the stores downtown and asked them, we gave them business cards with how to do the survey and the way you put it into the computer to access it. And they agreed to do so and I personally- And they agreed to do so. And I personally walked around handing business cards. And I walked around on a weekly basis to check that the business cards were there and if they were down, I put additional ones in. So we did everything we could to try to reach out to people and make them aware. We had newspaper articles that this was going on. There was no intention, nor did we do it with the intent that the downtown was, what, what was to be fixed. This was an urban land institute survey really about what do you want in the downtown and where do you want it? And the downtown became a focus response to, to these, these answers. So it, it was marketed everywhere. We did not pay for a certified mailing to every resident. And the reason that people do who are looking for public permits, it is law that they send those notices out about the hearings.
We're really gonna have to move on. Did you wanna speak, Claire? If it was anyone else, I'd say no, we have to move on, but...
My thank you. Um, Claire Reynolds. I live further down on Main Street and I've lived there for a long time. I've been following this really very closely, uh, just for any kind of confusion. I am no longer on the E D C and haven't been for a while, but have been involved, um, quite a bit with this. Just a couple of things. Um, for those of you who did not see the presentation on December seventeenth to the selectmen...
Is that the one that Dave gave?
Excuse me?
Dave McKay.
No, Tom presented and I presented.
What, the one that Dave gave was a couple of weeks before that?
Uh, I, I don't know about that one.
No, I think it was...
You might have been watching a rerun.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, all right, so, um, one of the things that was really very, um, interesting that the selectmen said is that the chances of anything going forward is all of the committees and boards working together. And that really is, I think, the key thing. So instead of saying, well, what about this or what about that? And considering that, the E D C took the charge to start getting this going. In order to have something that is going to be a viable zoning, it needs to be discussed together. If you look at all those surveys that have been done or all those plans that are up there, you have, I would be willing to bet a minimum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars the taxpayers have spent for these studies. Now, we have another housing production plan that's going on. We have a master plan now that's going on. And the, the thing that's missing is the implementation. There's a lot of really good stuff in there. So that, the point that I'm trying to make is that none of this is gonna happen unless E D C and planning board and anybody else who's involved works together. If it's something that you wanna see happen, then working together, it will happen. I will tell you, and you probably know, realtors will not take people through the downtown area when they're going to show a house because of the state that the downtown area is in. And yes, Andrew brings up a very, very good point about the parking, absolutely. But one of the things that I think people take a look at is just the land that currently exists there now. There is additional land that is, um, for sale. There's additional land that may become available when people see that, you know, hey, this land is gonna get developed. I, I don't really want to redo my house or whatever. If I'm offered enough money for it, I'll sell my house. There's all kinds of different options. But the thing is, is that, um, it has to get moving along. The selectmen specifically said, and if you haven't seen it, fast forward to two hours and forty-four minutes within the presentation, and you will see exactly where Tom started. And, um, we kinda had a little discussion in terms of how everything was going to work out with the selectmen. They told us to come back with a plan that then they would approve. As you know, they're the ones who were sponsoring the article, okay? They said they would just love to see something that is a collaborative effort. If we have planning board support, it's going to, you know, go much further. Yes, there's a lot of things that have to be worked out. Nobody is talking about a five-story, um, office building skyscraper or, you know, whatever it is. And, and I think there's a lot of things that people don't understand. So if you can attend any of the meetings the next several weeks, it would really be beneficial. E D C doesn't wanna have anybody get blindsided at the, um, public hearing. And, um, I think that, uh, that's really a, a good time for people to actually see what is going to happen. But I think, and I, I can only speak from what just makes a total logic to me that if it's a joint, um, if it's a joint endeavor, it's gonna have a lot more traction. One other thing, and I'll be real quick, um, this whole thing of design guidelines. Every town has design guidelines, okay? We don't want pink styrofoam buildings in downtown, you know, obviously. Somebody has to put together a document to get started so that you have a working document that you can say, well, I don't agree with this. Can we change this? I don't agree with nine units, uh, for, you know, uh, whatever, for, uh, mixed-use housing. Well, then you discuss. What are the parameters? It depends on the size of the building. These are all the things that just have to be discussed out. It's, it's not just for the E D C to put all this work into it without any agreement, um, from somebody else. So I think that's, um, I think that's, uh, about it. The, the, just one last thing, and I know I said that before. One last thing, my absolutely last thing, is the selectmen asked the question, whose responsibility is it to take this burden of the zoning? And so to speak, run it through its course or whatever. And, you know, nobody really, you know, nobody really put a name on it. And that's because it's something that all of the boards and committees want and agree on. So I think that's a really good tack to take going forward. I told the selectmen we're on a tight schedule, but it's doable. And, um, I hope that helps. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're gonna move on. We're gonna thank you for a wonderful presentation, a very lively discussion. And, um, have to move on to our next agenda items. And thanks very, thanks very much.
I think Thursday's a dead point. We'll try to find something between now and hearings in between. Or no hearings because we can't agree.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a review of the open space and recreation plan. Would that be, uh, the town planner? Karina, start us off.
Oh, yes, if I could. You're welcome. Thanks, Claire. Is that the right way? Just gotta bend it the right way. You're welcome. Okay, um... Thank you. Um, in mid-December, um, we were notified by the open space, um, recreation, what, what's it called? Open space and recreation plan. Open space and recreation plan. That, um, it had been prepared. And recently, we have finished the revisions needed as required by the E E A for approval of the open space and rec plan. And that they were, um, requesting that the document be sent to the planning board members for their review and for the board to ultimately provide a letter of support. So, um, we sent you a link to hopefully have a chance to review the report. If you haven't done so, possibly you could take a closer look at it and give us an, um, kind of a consensus or a roll call of sorts of what you think of it, if there's any comments, any feedback. Or if you generally support the product so that we can provide that, uh, any recommendations or, um, it's fine. Back to the, um, your committee, right? I'm sorry, I'm just a little tired. It's a group, the Open Space and Recreation Plan Group, who've been working on putting this together. Which is Freddie Gillespie, Melissa Danza from Conservation, Mimi Luttrell, and Judith Watson, I believe. Is she's not on that? Is she on that? There's somebody else who's listed on this. Anyway, um, they're hoping for some kind of feedback from the planning board. So I don't know if you've had a chance to look at, uh, it's a pretty sizable report, lots of good information. So that's what we have. We need to find out if you've looked at it and then if you have any comments or if you need more time.
I have not looked at it, but I will. Anyone else?
So do we want to, um, have looked at it by the next meeting and then vote whether to support it or...
If that's acceptable to the timeline of the working group. I don't know if you have a deadline.
Hi, Freddie Gillespie, um, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, and we've been working on this since two thousand and sixteen. I'll give you a little background, and I know it's late, so I'll make it quick, but, um, we started out with a very large group. We had hired the Conway School of Landscape Design. We did all of the key points that that contract, um, was set up for. I originally had argued against using them because they didn't complete all of the chapters that are required. So this is an update. We have a two thousand and nine plan that this... Is that the right year? This updates it. Certain chapters of that needed to be done per, um, the, um, E E A's requirements, not the whole thing. So we started working on that, the students, uh, we did a lot of the public outreach and, you know, fulfilled their contract, but there was sections left undone. And between staff turnover and, you know, people, it turned out it just sort of faltered. The Open Space Commission went to the CPC. We got some funding to do one chapter that was allowable, one or two. We hired a consultant. We just finished that work. Beth Rosenbloom was working on it a lot with us. She left. So, um, you know, I pulled together, uh, Mimi, the new town, uh, we lost, Doreen was involved with us heavily from recreation. She left, so we pulled together, um, the remaining, um, what we had and sent it to E E A. This is not the normal process. Usually you have a complete document. But we figured, given how many starts and stops there'd been, send it to them and see, sort of like the bowl of spaghetti against the wall, what, what was acceptable. And we also were on a tight timeline because if we had waited a couple more weeks, we would have had to start all over again. We got it in. They approved it with a few additional things they wanted to be looked at. We have finished that and now it's up to you. And it's also been sent to M A C C. for your review and then we will send it to the selectmen as a final package with, um, for their review and then it goes back to E E A. We've done a really great job giving some difficult situations that we have, um, conditional approval from E E A, which means I believe we are still eligible for state grants. Probably they would approve it, but maybe not give us the funding until it's finalized. So, um, we've really worked hard and a lot of people have contributed a lot of work to this. So we're at the final step, stage and, you know... Oh, and this is also, um, being used and are already being used as part of the, um, some of the, uh, goals and, um, objectives in your master plan that came out of this. So it's a good document. It's just been a little bit hard when you don't have... We didn't, we weren't fully funded and I would argue the next time we're doing it, you know, hire someone who can do the complete plan because these things happen. Staff leaves, committees change, so...
Any questions or comments?
Just, I think the question, Freddie, to you was, what's the timeline and can you wait for, um, us? I did, um, review briefly, um, but I, I asked Sarah to provide some additional background for me. Um, so I would need a little bit more time, so it's trying to understand if you could wait for our next meeting for us to review.
Thought you'd have all, what, two hundred something pages done by tonight? You got it yesterday, right? Yeah, it's at your, it's... We're also waiting for M A P C., which we're hoping the master plan committee can help push them a little bit because we've been told they can be lengthy reviewers. The sooner the better, but this really is, um, you know, not expected to be even your, your next meeting. That would be great. Also, I would ask that, um, you can look, there's a workbook that tells you which sections we had to do over. I can send you a link to that in my spare time.
Any more questions, comments? Not, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you. Next agenda item is another discussion item, car wash in Village Business District. Karina?
All right, I'll talk about this generally at first. We got a, a call from a gentleman, um... Hold on, let me fill my file. Jack Hayes. That's it, Jack Hayes. While I was out of the office and Sarah took the call and he had a generic question about, um, a car wash being allowed in the Village Business District. So, um, Sarah took it upon herself to do some research. And I'll let her further explain that and then I'll give some final comments.
Yeah, um, so it was just a general inquiry. The gentleman was wondering, um, if, uh, a car wash would be potentially approved, obviously going through the proper channels for, um, site plan approval as well as the special permit under, um, section, uh, one seventy-four dash, uh, twelve...
I think it's eight point four.
Eight point four, yeah, 'cause it's, so, uh, eight point four in vi- Village Business. So I reached out to Lori Lavoli to see if there was any, um, precedent. Um, and there was a car wash approved in the Business Highway District, um, under eight seventy-four dash eight C two. And that was approved through the planning board as well. That, that site plan did come through. So at first, it was originally approved, it was, it was in two thousand and six. And it was originally approved, um, by the Z B A for more than one building use, uh, on a lot. And then that site plan came before the board and that was approved for the car wash. So the, the verbiage in the two sections, um, is the same. So the language is the same, um, but it's under two different numbers. So the inference is that if it was approved before, under that language, even though it's a different zone, that it would be approved in the other zone because of the same language.
Yeah, I think what you're, and just to clarify, what you're trying to say is that even though it was the Business Highway District that this project went through, the criteria in the district, the restriction, or the use that was allowed
Use.
Said auto repair, auto services, auto repair services. Well, if you look under the Business Village District, it uses the same language. It says auto, uh, auto service.
Yeah, automotive service, gasoline station, or repair garage, automotive sales. And so it was approved under automotive service.
Yeah, so the, the whole, the whole idea of this is that a car wash was considered under automotive service. So, uh, the building commissioner gave us, um, an email with some opinion on that, that, um, it appears that the same language means the same thing. Now, whether it's, it's a special permit in the Business Village District versus in the Business Highway. But the fact is that there was no definition for car wash or use described as car wash
Right.
in either of those districts, but it fell under auto service. Was that nice and confusing?
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's about as clear as mud, sorry. No, I mean, I think that the, the from the research, it seems as though the car wash that's currently existing in town was approved under... existing in town was approved under the automotive service clause. And because the automotive service clause exists in both of those districts, that it would be, it's not prohibited, so to speak.
They could come forward with a permit.
Right. It's permitted in the sense that someone could come forward with a plan for it, and then go through the process, and then be, you know, either approved or denied based on the plan and based on the process, but that it's not explicitly prohibited.
Very good.
Okay.
If the board needs further clarification, say so now, otherwise, we need to give the town planner our opinion based, based on the information that we have, that's been presented. We don't know what's being proposed, but we have looked at the rules, and there's a simple question, do we think it's allowed in the Business Village District, or not? I happen to think that it is an allowed use. Anyone else? Mr. Mills?
I would agree.
Mrs. Luttrell?
I would ask town council, because I know a lot of towns have particular zoning definitions for car washes, although we don't here, they have, they have zoning restrictions specifically for car washes. And I'm always leery, because the zoning says any use not specifically listed is prohibited, so I'm always leery of something that's not specific, whether it's an allowed use or not. So I would ask town council.
Mrs. Houlihan?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to that, too. I guess, in my experience, this would still fall under a special permit, and the Business Village District, we know, has drainage and water issues, so whether those ever get repaired, I don't know, but I would rather defer to have a specificity around a car wash.
So we'll ask, we'll send a request to town council for his opinion, with, with the results of tonight's discussion, so that he has a feel for where, how the board discussed it. Anything else on that? Seeing none, we'll move on to the other business properly before the board. First of all is the planner's report.
All right, let me do this fast.
I'm sorry, could I interrupt for two seconds? Is there going to be any chance for resident input to currying up on the different roads?
We're going to get to that, it's on, it's on the agenda.
Oh, she's asking if during the planner's report, she'll be able to give input on the tree removal.
Yes, yes. You can give input anytime.
Okay, you want to do the, it's like an obsession, it's after.
After.
Quickly, St. Mark's came in this afternoon with a question for us regarding 26 Main Street. It's the White House across from the old fire station, police station, and they're currently looking on reverting it back from a one-family to a two-family, and asked if it would possibly need to come before the planning board for site plan review. She's discussing that with, St. Mark's is discussing it with the building department, so just a heads up that that may be a question. Typically, one and two families don't fall under site plan review unless there's an expansion of use, or additional parking required, more than five spaces, under 20, or something like that. So this is something we're still researching, the successor has it previously as a two-family, so it may be handled under that anyway. So, just so you know, that was a question. We have good news, the street tree guidelines for Southborough that VHB, the consultant, helped put together, along with a group of committee and board staff, has been finalized with a picture and published on the website, and we have 10 color copies for distribution if someone from a particular department wants one. We provided that to the DPW, who was a big part in helping that come to fruition. So that's completed. Okay, the last thing is, the Deerfoot Road, we received an email, the planning department received an email from Margaret Landry, 135, 134 Deerfoot Road, regarding the removal of a tree by the DPW, which is adjacent to a stone wall.
May we approach?
We want you to. Come to the mic, but let the town planner finish, and then everyone will have a turn.
Let me just explain, and I'm just going to put a picture up here, so everybody knows what we're talking about. Tree. Hold on. Okay, so this is an image that we took from Bing Maps today, I'm not sure what date it is, but the tree is in the center of the picture. You can see that the base of the tree is adjacent to the stone wall there. The DPW recently has been doing work in that area, they had an arborist come out, and a tree report was provided, indicated the tree was not viable to survive, so it was destined to be removed. So they started removing the limbs, I believe there's still some left there, the base of the tree, and ultimately, they'll be grinding it down. There's several pieces of state mass general law that we posted for people to, for the planning board to review regarding scenic wall, tree removal and such, so if the tree is in the town right-of-way, and it's designated as unsafe by arborists through the DPW, there's an avenue for them to remove that tree. Now, if the stone wall gets impacted, if the stone wall is on town right-of-way, then it would have to come before the planning board for stone wall removal, public hearing. So I spoke with DPW director earlier today, and she provided some feedback indicating the process that had taken place. She's not sure if the wall will be disturbed or not, but I let her know that if it is, and it is on town right-of-way, that it would have to come to the planning board for a public hearing. So the question is, is it on town property? I looked at the old A&R from Deerfoot Road that we did last year, to see if there was any indication of the survey having picked that up, and it was not on that plan. It's slightly south of the A&R lots that were approved.
So she's supposed to come to us after they disturb the wall, or prior to disturbing the wall?
No, if they, I suggested, well, I let her, I let Karen know today that if the wall is, is potentially going to be disturbed, it would have to be a hearing if it's on public right-of-way. So if the wall's on private property, then it's not under planning board jurisdiction, it's private wall. But if the wall is on public town right-of-way, which I don't know if it is.
But they took down the tree.
It can't be disturbed. They didn't, they left, the trunk, I believe, is still there. They cut a lot of it down, right? Every, it's already ground down to the ground?
But my point is, if the, if they're working on a tree.
Mm-hmm. They haven't removed all the way.
I had, I had one that I was trying to get the town to take down, because it was dead, and they're like, no, that's your tree.
Yeah.
Wouldn't touch it. So if they're, if the town's taking down a tree, then it's in the right-of-way.
Yes.
If the wall's right on the tree, it would make sense that.
That they would need to.
They would need to go.
Right. But if they don't take the tree all the way out, see, this is the thing, I don't know, the intent is that they're going to grind that down and leave a vertical wall there, so they're going to leave, if it's going to, if they can avoid touching the wall, that's what they're going to do.
With a massive grinder.
Yeah.
That goes beyond the base of the tree.
That's what I was informed, so.
Doesn't sound like it's going to work.
I drove down there, and it looks like the horse has already left the barn, it looks like the wall has already been disturbed.
So the tree is ground.
Kind of, it looks nice on one side, and then there're just all these rocks thrown up, and all kinds of wood chips and.
Well, I didn't have a chance to drive by, can you tell me, and I will probably tomorrow, is the tree already cut down within like this height of the wall?
No, it's taller, it has no branches.
It's just, it's still, it still remains, it's just the branches have been taken off, because the stump is, or the tree itself was too big, they need to get in a larger crane to pull it out. So they stopped work, because they didn't have a crane that was big enough.
Okay, so if, if, I would, what I will do, if the planning board agrees, I will let the DPW know tomorrow that if there's any possibility of the wall being impacted, that they need to request an application for stone wall.
I would think they just, at this point, probably be proactive, and just say it'd be best if they come in.
Come in, okay.
Well, if, if the wall, if the intention of the DPW, or anybody else, is to retain the wall, is to save the wall in its present form, but this work is being done, because they determined that the tree is unsafe, so in the process of dealing with the tree, which is within their right, under mass general law, and in the process of doing that, they either carelessly, or are forced to alter the wall, whether they've already altered it, or they need to alter it some more to get the tree out of there, it would seem to me that all we would need is a commitment from the DPW, that after the tree is gone, that all of the rocks on that wall will stay on the wall. Any of the rocks that have been disturbed will be put back in place. None of the rocks will leave the site, and the wall will retain its original size and shape. It's usually, the public hearings are usually for stone walls, for, no, the wall goes behind the tree, there's no hole there now, the wall is continuous. So if the intent is to, is to, is to save the wall and not alter it, I don't think that that requires a public hearing. If you, if we intend to make an opening in the wall, or somehow alter the wall, then that requires a public hearing, and that's, since I've been on the board, that's what the hearings involve, is a permanent alteration disturbance, a removal of an existing stone wall. And in this case, there's no intention to do that, but it's almost impossible to remove the tree without somehow disturbing the wall, then I think, I mean, what are you going to have the hearing for? The hearing's going to say, yeah, put the wall back the way it wants, the way it was. And if the DPW says, we fully intend to do that, then there's no disagreement, it's just a matter of a temporary disturbance of the wall with a commitment to put it back the way it was. Mr. Mills?
I, I mean, since majority of the tree has been removed, I would agree with that. The only thing is, I think the extra step would be, there would be, need to be an additional commitment that ongoing, because in five years, when the roots have decayed, and the wall starts falling in on the roots, it's going to be, start crumbling where they put it back together, that they, they're going to have to commit to redoing it if it starts to decay because of the roots rotting and dissolving over time. That, that would be the only additional thing I would ask if they came before us.
And just to clarify, yeah, go ahead, Don.
Go ahead.
Mr. Morris, may I address another issue? The tree is quite large. I mean, I'm, I'm not an arborist, I can't tell you, but the thing has been there for a million years.
Twenty-six feet around.
Okay, it's probably about 26 feet around. We have a significant water problem, and I know this board was addressed to that fact back in October, when the residents of Deerfoot sent you a copy of the letter, and it was delivered to the planner, that we have so much water coming off that hill. The new house at 126A, if you, in a rainstorm, he's got water that's gullying, coming off the hill and making gullets, in a, in a, in what seems to be a new lawn, okay? It's supposed to be a new lawn. He's, he's, he would have been here tonight, but he couldn't, he had another commitment, and he's very upset about that. The water's being diverted from 126A, down my driveway, which is on the other side of that tree, which, we never had that water being diverted, but the way in which that lot was handled in the excavation, our fear is not only when they move that tree and dis, and disturb the area, we're going to get even more water coming down Deerfoot Road. They put in two catch basins, Karen put in two catch basins. One was put in inappropriately, it's up too high, she told us in an email that they made a mistake, it's way too high, it's right in front of that, basically to the left of that tree, if you're looking at it going up the hill. It's, it was set too high, it's got to be redone. The one that she put by the paper road, that one, none of it's catching any water to this point. Part of it, I understand, is because the road hasn't been finished, and it's supposed to be crowned when it's done. But we are getting so much water, and if we are really frightened to disturb any more of the vegetation, and right now, to your point, to the town planner's point, that tree's not down. They only basically took the little bit of the top off. You, you go visit that tree, it's, it's feet in the air, it's not down. And as I said, they need a huge crane, bigger than the one they brought that day, in order to take that tree out. And we have a significant water problem on Deerfoot.
I just want to make it clear, though, that the planning board holds the public hearings for stone wall removal or alteration, and for public tree removal. The, the water issue is not our jurisdiction, and all of these actions are being guided by the DPW, and the planning board has no jurisdiction, no, we're not their boss, the selectmen are. And I happened to see that there's one of the selectmen in the room tonight, so.
May I ask a question? The water that I'm indicating, yes, we're talking about the drainage system, but the water coming off the hill that's been diverted, and given a different path by the exist, by this new development, which we were all in favor of, and wrote a letter to the selectmen in favor of the development, the water, the way it's been diverted now, is coming in a different path down the hill. I'm not talking about, I understand the DPW is the drainage issue, but doesn't this come under the planning board as to this water now being deviated differently from this development? Whose, whose problem is it? I mean, who do we go to?
Those were frontage.
Conservation says no, it's not them.
Those were frontage lots, right?
Correct, correct.
Yep, they were A&R lots.
So it's not, it's not a subdivision?
Yeah.
Again, could be wrong, but I believe all of the issues that you're discussing, other than the, the stone wall for this particular tree, are under the jurisdiction of the selectmen.
Can I jump in with a tree issue? That's a straight tree issue? Okay. I'm confused when you have a historic stone wall that's over 150 years old, that went along both sides of Deerfoot, which you can see there. Does the dividing line for the town, the street, start in the middle of the town wall? Does, I mean, the stone wall like it does on property lines? Like on my property, I'm the red house there, my property lines are all done down the middle of the stone wall by the old surveyors. Does the town, does the town road property start in the middle of those stone walls? And then the homeowners is up there?
I don't think that, it, it could, in some streets, in some properties. We've seen that the public way, which consists of paved street, and then usually some land on either side of the pavement, many of the roads in town are called two-rod roads. Rod, I think, is 16 feet, so they're 32 feet. So depending on what your property line is on the front, they would measure, and if the town records indicate that it's a two-rod road, then they just measure from the property line. But they vary.
It varies.
They vary. So you may have a, you know, 31-foot wide, or 30-foot wide public way in front of your house, but then if you go down, down the street a few hundred yards, it might be 36 feet.
Okay, so my question for you, Don, Mr. Morris, is this, there were several There were several other trees that were clearly on town property on road, on the roadway that were taken down by the DPW, that were healthy trees, that were just down, gone. Pine tree, another oak, and the residents sort of watched in dismay as the stone walls all were knocked down. And so there's no stone walls there, all those walls are gone. Some of them have been slightly rebuilt, maybe tumbled back together, or they've been rebuilt by the new looking stone walls that are all plum and like computer made, kind of. So basically, any, any like scenic road enforcement was zip. Our road was the prettiest road that I, that I knew in Southboro. It was rural, it had the stone walls, it had trees, it was great. It is now the ugliest road in Southboro. All the, all the walls are down, every single tree that could be taken down, that was, that was in the roadway, has been taken down. Nobody said a word. We only got consulted about this oak tree because we squawked about it beforehand. We've been to the conservation commission, we're here at the planning board, we've been to building, we've been to planning. Everybody seems to think, zip, so.
It's, it's, these are actions.
Where do we go, what did we do wrong here?
I'm, I'm trying to tell you.
Okay.
These are actions performed, managed by the DPW. The DPW answers to the selectmen. If you think, if any of us think that the DPW is not following the rules relative to tree removal, then we should bring it to the selectmen's attention. And if, in fact, it's, it's shown that they're not following the rules, then they need to be educated or disciplined to, to the point of following the rules.
It's too late for us now, we're ruined. But I think when Park Central happens, if it happens, or any other developments happen, the neighborhood should know ahead of time what they can do so that, we're basically ruined. We're an ugly road now, and no amount of planting is gonna help us. Our walls are gone, our trees are gone, we're just, it's a mess.
Do you, do you have, do you disagree with me that you need to speak to the selectmen about this?
Well, I think your, your logic is, 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 is quite good because obviously she reports the board of selectmen. But I'm, I'm concerned, and I know you have a comment to something I said, I believe. I'm not so sure that the water coming off the hill, as it comes off the hill and's been displaced by building, is, is the DPW. That's my question.
Well, if the DPW put the catch basins in incorrectly and things, then I.
Well, that's part A, but I'm talking about coming off the hill because the way in which that lot was developed, right, the water was, and, and I, and this, and I know that there is issues between the homeowner and the developer as to the way in which it was done. The water from the hill, I mean, we got a lot of water on that hill, is coming right down the middle. You can see the gullets coming through the back.
It's digging holes in the wall.
It's digging holes right in his lot, okay, and that's how much water is coming off. They backfilled, and I know we put this in the letter to you, that you had a copy of, they backfill that lot to the top of that stone wall, and that stone wall isn't a retaining wall. So now the silt is seeping through the wall onto my driveway. But that is not made to be a retaining wall. And everyone that we've asked says, it's not us, it's not us, it's an A and R lot. You know, where does the responsibility lie? We'll go wherever we're supposed to go, but I don't think that's the selectmen's responsibility, and we also.
We have a selectman in here, why don't we ask him to come to the microphone and see if he agrees?
We also know in real estate law, that there, you know, there, you cannot divert water onto somebody else's property.
Mr. Stivers, could you give us your opinion relative to jurisdiction over existing roads?
I'm reluctant to opine without an opportunity to sort of better understand some of the context for this. But I think clearly DPW reports to board of selectmen. And if there's an issue with the DPW, then I would encourage people to come to the board of selectmen. There's a public comment, uh, agenda item at the beginning of each selectmen's meeting, and so anyone who has an opinion about this or any other matter should come and speak their piece and see if we can get a conversation going about it. I mean, it sounds like there have been some interesting gaps in terms of what needs to be done, and, and I'm also concerned about, uh, unclear responsibility as far as, you know, who's in charge of this. I think it would be very helpful to try to sort some of this out. And going forward, it seems to me to be very helpful to clarify what happens with tree removal, stone wall removal. From my limited look at this, I think there's some inconsistency in terms of some of the state laws about this. And I think town council has looked at this, and I would be interested in having a conversation with him about who's responsible for what and how you deal with, uh, tree removal, stone wall disturbance on both town property and private property, so folks understand how this works going forward. But I'm still trying to understand some of the context here, and I would expect we'll have some conversations about it going forward.
Thank you.
And as far as the trees go that have been removed, I mean, if, I, I think you're at the last town meeting when we approved the tree program.
I have a copy of it right here.
There's always an opportunity, I think, going forward where there, you could, the town is looking to sometimes place trees, so. The DPW is the one who does that, correct? Finding of the trees?
Right.
And you might be able to jump to the top of the list. I know it might not be the size that you had and caliber from before.
These were, these were oaks.
I understood.
Not in my lifetime will they return.
I mean, I wouldn't give up hope if they, if they deteriorated a wall that was in front of your house around the property because they took out a tree, I would, um, I would advocate that you should be able to get that put back the way it was. And if, uh, the, you know, the trees are something you want there, you might be able to work with them too, to get trees put back in. So I wouldn't give up.
And the question of the water coming off the hill, which is, that's really not DPW, I mean, I don't think.
Well, you've got a public road. Selectmen have jurisdiction over the public way.
Okay.
If a private property owner is allowing water or anything else to come off of that property and cause damage on the public way, then I believe that the DPW, the selectmen, who have jurisdiction over the public way, can demand, can ask or demand the private property owner to control or reduce the impact from their property onto the public way.
But it's not his fault, he just bought the house.
Here's the problem, he just bought the house, what, eight weeks ago?
Those are the rules.
No, I understand, I understand, but what I'm saying is, he's got as much of a problem in the water running off of that hill as we do.
Just, you really have to focus on, it's a public way. If something is causing damage to the public way, what is it and who's responsible for it? And if, if the road is being deteriorated as a result of neglect by the town to prevent or reduce the impact from, uh, private property, then the town may have some, uh, responsibility there as far as doing something. But again, public ways, if this was a subdivision road that was not accepted by the town, the planning board has jurisdiction.
If it wasn't, it was A and R lot.
It's an existing road, which we all know Deerfoot's been around for a long time.
Long time.
It's under the jurisdiction of the selectmen. So you can go to the conservation, you can go to the planning board, you can go to the ZBA, you can go to anybody you want, but you gotta go to the selectmen.
We, um, we woke up one morning and two of the big trees were down. How can that be prevented from happening again in another part of town?
It's happening all over town. Two years ago, they were, they were cutting down at, at least a dozen trees on Sears Road. Sears Road is another primitive road. I saw that happening, I called the selectmen and I called Karen. And they both told me that the trees were, uh, under Mass General Law, the utility companies have the authority, without a public hearing, to prune them or cut them down.
So as I understand it, there's two sets of laws, there's two, there's two sets of statutes governing the trees. There's the public shade tree, which is the old set of laws, and then there's the scenic road statutes, which is this nineteen seventy-three set of laws. And that, in this case, what, what Karen was doing was under the old set.
The, whether it's old or new, if the tree is determined
Yep.
to be dead, they don't need to have a public hearing.
Two of them are totally healthy.
They can just cut it down.
Two of them are totally healthy.
If it's determined to be damaged
Yeah.
either from lightning or wind, and it causes a hazard, they don't have to have a public hearing. They can cut it down. If a tree is stressed, where maybe fifty percent of the, uh, the leaves are, let's say, green, and the other fifty percent are either not there or they're showing signs of stress, then it's a judgment call. And it seems, it's been my experience over the years, that if ninety percent of the tree is green and ten percent, this isn't every tree, but some trees in town, are stressed, then not necessarily this DPW, but over the years, it's been determined that the tree should come down without a hearing. And it's very upsetting to the neighbors to, uh, see a, a mostly healthy tree be taken down. Mrs. Latrell.
Thank you. As champions of Tree City USA that was passed at, uh, the last annual town meeting, I was hoping that this board would, um, ask the board of selectmen for clarification on this. With Tree City USA, we, um, restated our acceptance of chapter eighty-seven. And chapter eighty-seven says that, um, public shade trees, there must be a hearing in front of the tree warden. And town council has opined on this, and his opinion was that if, um, there's a wind or snow event or ice event where it knocks down trees and there's not time for a public hearing, that there, you know, obviously they have to clear the road, it's impeding, uh, passageway. But the, um, the arborist report on this tree was done in April of twenty nineteen, so I would think eight months would be ample time to have a public hearing. So the residents would understand why a public shade tree is being taken down. And a public shade tree, just to be clear, is owned by the public, which is why a public hearing is required. So the public will know and be able to opine on what is happening to public property. So I'd like this board, as champions of Tree City USA, to ask the selectmen to clarify the policy on, um, public shade trees.
Anything else on this?
Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
So it's, it's, it's your request, uh, Mimi, that the boards send a, a note to the selectmen asking for, uh, expressing our concerns about the lack of, uh, public hearings and clarity on, um, the removal of the trees. Agreed, is that agreed? Is the board in favor of that for? So that's what we'll do, we will send a note to, the town planner will craft a note to the selectmen expressing, uh, our concern, um, and reflecting your concerns. You're not the, you're not, I mean, I, I get phone calls from people that the tree's gone, they're ballistic that the trees were cut down. What they consider to be completely healthy trees being removed, if you wanna speak, you gotta go to the mic. But they don't come to the, they don't come to the selectmen and they don't come to the planning board, so they just swallow it. But it's, it's not just in your neighborhood, and maybe there is a, a, a need to either get clarity for us and the public as to why these trees are, are cut down without hearings, or to start to have more hearings.
The neighborhood was told that the tree was coming down because it had to come down in order to do the drainage work. One had to happen before the other, that's what we were told. The drainage work has been done and the tree's now coming down. I don't understand. We were told the drainage work was not going to be able to be accomplished without the removal of the tree. That's what we were told.
Sounds like the selectmen need, need to, uh, get your answers.
And, and I honestly think, I don't understand, if, if you needed to do, we were told, we need to take that tree down in order to accomplish the problem of the drainage coming off of the hill and put our drains in. We have to do that first and then the drains. And one day, they're there putting the drains in. And then we get a call, an email on the, that, on the thirtieth, they're taking the tree down. And we got that, I think, on Friday, and they were taking it down on Monday. Drain work's already done, drains are already in. No one seems to wanna answer that question as to why.
Unless there's a plan to perform additional drainage work beyond what's already been done.
Well, we were sure, we have a plot, we have a plan from the DPW, the drains that they're gonna put in, they've put in.
Okay.
So.
If I could make.
Again, selectmen.
If I could make a slight suggestion, I think there's probably a lot of bad feeling generated by the tree removal in the town. Maybe it would be nice to put into the, we are now a tree happy town bylaw, that there's a, there's a, 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 a better method of communication when trees are being removed. Yeah.
The hearing process.
I don't know who would have it, but it just seems like.
The planning board.
The planning board does.
Holds the hearings.
All right, so, 'cause it, it seems like arborist decides in, in April, they're gonna remove it. We don't see anything, we hear nothing, we get an email that's kind of informal, and then all of a sudden, zong, it's down, and the other two just went and nobody said a word about anything.
But we were told that it had to come down in order to put the drains in. The tree has to come down first to do the drainage, to put the drains in.
So, uh, we felt, we felt we were being, um, dis-served by the way it was done. We felt, we felt we were being jerked around.
And I'm not really sure, looking at what's been taken down so far, that that tree doesn't look that bad, doesn't look bad at all, I gotta tell you, take a look at it.
It's fine, too late, anyway.
It's late, but take a look at it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, oh, are we still on the planners' report? Next item is approval of minutes, December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Mrs. Latrell.
I move with, that we approve the minutes of, um, from Monday, December sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Second.
Most.
I have edits though.
Most has been made in second, and any discussion, Mrs. Latrell.
Line ninety-one. Just add an S on the end of species for Cs. Um, and then on the second line, um, ninety-two, after, um, approval, I'd put for any changes.
Approval for any changes?
Yeah. That's it for me.
Mrs. Holahan.
Second. Oh, sorry.
No comment.
Most has been made in seconded, revisions noted, all in favor? And Mr. Mills was, is abstaining, three to one, three to zero to one. Three, zero, two. Three, zero, one, one. What other combinations can we try? Now we have approval of executive session minutes, December second, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Mills.
I make a motion, we approve the, uh, executive session meeting minutes from December second, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Most has been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Three to zero to.
One to one?
Three to one to one. I wasn't at that executive session.
So three, so you're abstaining?
Yes.
So it's two abstaining and one.
Well, Jess is not here, so he's not voting.
One abstaining and three yeses, zero no's.
Right. There we go.
So is that three, three, one, one, zero, zero? Next item on the agenda is, uh, the next meeting is January twenty-seventh.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Most has been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor, we're adjourned.